We are awaiting Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Padilla, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Weiss is actually waiting here. Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, October 31st, 2006, a very happy Halloween. Anybody in costume will try to move to the front of the line and public comment. We hope everybody will have a safe and good Halloween. We are the Los Angeles City Council, and we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. in public meetings here in City Hall. We are currently in John Ferraro Council chambers, room 340, the third floor of City Hall here. We also meet the first Friday of the month in Van Nuys City Hall. If that is closer to where you live, or anybody else is welcome to come to Van Nuys to give testimony and to watch the city council. And in each of our regular meetings here in City Hall, we also afford people the opportunity to testify from Van Nuys City Hall via remote if that is closer to where you live. We also are going to be taking our meetings on the road later this year and into next year down in the Harbor area, and so we're looking forward to bringing the city council close to where you live in evening meetings so that you can attend. We are broadcast live for each of our meetings on Channel 35, which is the city's cable channel, LA City View, and that is shown throughout the city's cable system. We also are rebroadcast in the evening on the same channel, and we also can be caught through the web, the city's website, at lacity.org, where we have live streaming video of the council meetings. Lastly, you can call council phone and call in 213-621-CITY to hear our meetings or any of the committee meetings. We would ask folks to please take their seats and to clear the center aisle so that we can make sure that we have folks able to get to the podium for public comment. I want to thank the council members that are here pursuing to council rules in timely fashion, Councilmember Cardenas, Grohl, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, Zine. We are waiting one more council member to have two-thirds. Mr. Weiss has just arrived, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Grohl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
If I could please ask folks to clear the center aisle, please, for our public comment. If you please clear the center aisle pursuant to our council rules of decorum for the center aisle, we have 10 members right now, two-thirds a quorum. I can ask our sergeants-at-arms to please help us with that. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds. If there's no objection, that will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. If there's no objection, that will be approved as well. Next order of business?
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute that's been agendized.
Well, we have Councilmember Zine already with his hand to his chest, so I'd ask him to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If I can ask everybody to please rise in council chambers for a salute to our flag.
President, place your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and I would draw everybody's attention to Mr. Zine's pumpkin pie tie there. Sorry, pumpkin tie, not pumpkin pie. If we can take next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do we should take up public comment at this time?
Yes, I'd like to take public comment this time. I would like to reiterate the warning on the rules of decorum to ensure that we do not have meetings that are disrupted, rule number 12, and to remind our speakers that Mr. City Attorney wanted to remind our speakers of some of the basics of that rule and where there's been a pattern of practice, making sure that we are able to continue our council meetings. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole. Personal, impertinent, and duly repetitive slanderous or profane remarks are prohibited. Loud-threatening personal or abusive language is prohibited. Disorderly conduct that disrupts or serves or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting is prohibited. No person in the audience may engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language or other acts that disturb, disrupt, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of any council meeting. Unless addressing the council or entering or leaving the council chambers, all persons in the audience shall remain sitting in the seats provided; no person shall stand or sit in the center aisle. The presiding officer may request that a person who is violating these rules of decorum comply immediately. If, after receiving a warning from the presiding officer, a person persists in violating the rules of decorum, the presiding officer shall order him or her to leave the council meeting. The presiding officer may order the sergeant-at-arms of the council to remove that person from the council chambers. Any person who resists removal by the sergeant-at-arms shall be charged with a violation of Penal Code Section 403.
Thank you. Our first public speaker is out in Van Nuys. Again, I remind the speakers and the public that they can testify from Van Nuys if that's closer to where they live and we're able to watch you on television here at City Hall and for our viewers. Our first speaker is Daniel Gus in Van Nuys. Sir, you have two minutes, and welcome to City Council.
Thank you, Council President Garcetti. Last week, 100,000 people came to the Sherman Oaks Street Festival, according to the Sherman Oaks Chamber of Commerce. 100,000 people, which is enough to fill up Dodger Stadium almost twice, and not one single dog, cat, or rabbit was brought from the teeming city shelters anywhere for adoption. Ed Boggs has been the GM for one year as of next month, and he has blown an opportunity for 100,000 people to see the dogs, cats, and rabbits from the city shelters. And when I mentioned this to him on Monday, he told me he's working on it. Well, he's been working on it for a year. Not one single animal was brought, and then the next day, they proceeded to kill them. Boggs talks about getting to no kill within five years, but he could have cleared out half of the animals from the shelter inventory if one in 200 people adopted an animal at the Sherman Oaks Street Fair. As of this morning, the city has one fewer veterinarians in the shelter. That means seven out of nine veterinarians' job positions in the city of Los Angeles are vacant. So we have bigger shelters, the capacity to hold more animals, and Ed Boggs has fewer vets per thousand animals in the system. He blew a chance to adopt 200, 300, 400 animals to an audience of 100,000 people at one street festival, and I'd like to know why this happened. I don't want to hear about what he's going to do for next year's street festival. I want to know why he blew this opportunity to reach 100,000 people. What Ed Boggs did have an opportunity to do that weekend is to sling mud at his boss in the New York Post.
You have 10 seconds, sir.
Thank you. He's defending himself in lawsuits in New York City, two of them, and he blew a grand opportunity to stop the killing this week, not five years from now. I want to know why he blew this grand opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your testimony. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. It's Zuma Dog, election special. First of all, AB 1381, something that didn't get to go to voter with people, even though the committee on AB 1381 said it should have been put to a vote of the people. I was watching Rick Pratt from the California School Board Association, and he had to inform the LAUSD school board that they're not going to be able to get state money. The California School Board Association, oh, he's dressed up like Zuma Dog. I didn't get it at first. Hey, we'll talk about that later. Anyway, no laughing matter, because the LAUSD is not going to be able to get state money. They're prohibited from receiving it under the layers of bureaucracy of AB 1381. Thank you very much, Mayor. It hasn't even started yet, and the kids are already being punished. Nunez, way to go with your bogus bill. Right now, I'd like to talk about Proposition H. You should call it Preparation H, because that's where I want to stick it, because it's going to be taxing the working class, the upper class, the lower class, everybody. If you're breathing, you get taxed on this Proposition H. And the thing is, there's 40,000 people homeless on the streets of Los Angeles every day, according to Bratton. Well, this only provides 1,000 homes for the next 10 years, 1,000 a year for the next 10 years. It's just a political drop in the bucket. But I would say that the mayor does have good intentions, and there's something called ICOs. And let me tell you about the ICOs. We already have affordable housing built into all these rampant condo conversions. Requirement that one-third of newly converted units be designated as affordable housing to low-moderate income housing. And there's an urgency clause in this, so we don't need Proposition H. That's why Zuma Dog says, "Don't give corporate welfare to the special interest bonanza," to quote the Daily News, "where you're only going to get about 1,000 homes a year for the next 10 years. It's going to cost billions. We'll be paying for it for the next 20 years." When it says right here in the ICOs that you can all pass tomorrow, just enforce it. It's already a rule. You can enforce it today. Requirements that one-third of newly converted units be designated as affordable housing. And Zuma Dog just solved the housing crisis by reading your own ICOs. Zuma Dog for City Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Tom Labange, for an introduction.
Please welcome a distinguished delegation from China, from many different provinces in China. Give them a big wave and a little hand there, especially from our sister city of Guangzhou, China. Good luck in the Olympics next year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good morning. Are they from Guangzhou or Beijing?
All over.
All over China, welcome. Our next public speaker, Duke Russell.
Acting President and members of the council, good morning. My name is Duke Russell. I am an alumnus of Los Angeles City College and a member of the Board of Directors, Hollywood High School Alumni Association. Thousands of your constituents need your immediate help to save the land at LA City College, to rebuild Snyder Field for football and championship track. New buildings there should replace the huge commercial golf driving range rather than destroy where the football field can be rebuilt for students and community recreation and health. The future of hundreds of young boys playing football in the following LAUSD high schools is at stake. Fairfax, Marshall, Belmont, Los Angeles, Dorsey, Crenshaw, Fremont, Manuel Arts, Jefferson, and Lincoln. Hundreds of girls who are cheerleaders at those schools are also in great danger. On their behalf, I wish the President of the Council to contact the President of LA City College immediately and the Board of Trustees who hired him. Six LA community colleges have football, including the alma mater of Mayor Villarreal. Your quick action can help many young men and women go to LACC and from there to schools like UCLA and USC. We appeal to you because the Board of Trustees has not responded to our approximately 50 speeches during the past four years. Jackie Robinson played football at Pasadena City College. From there, he went on to UCLA. Our young men and women deserve that same opportunity. Students and other taxpayers and voters have given LACC $248 million for Prop A and Double A.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. We appreciate your comment. I'm sorry, that's the time we check. We have to wrap that up, but thank you. If there's anything else you'd like to pass on, we'll make sure the sergeant-at-arms has that.
You're our last resort. Please help these young people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Russell. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
I'm here to clear up the record for my 750,000 viewers regarding what a council guy said that we're regulars down here. I'm not a regular down here. I'm persistent down here. I'm not down here because I'm promoting the N-word. I'm down here because I'm promoting job stability in $2.5 million worth of jobs that have been taken off the boardwalk. It's a big difference. When your civil rights have been violated versus your First Amendment rights have been violated on the boardwalk, it is clear, and it is clear to my understanding, that more than three or four lawsuits have been filed on behalf of the city. Even I find my old defense attorney on one of them, John Raifert Link. It was a lot of money being passed, and for the record, it's about jobs. It's not about the N-word. It's about everybody having their equal share and everybody having their equal say. It's about the Hare Krishnas. It's about the Jews. It's about the Dalai Lama. It's about the Buddha. It's about everybody having their fair share. Repeat again to all my 750,000 viewers out there. You hear us talk every day. It's not about the N-word. The N-word makes them listen. That's why I use it. It's about jobs in the community. I'm about the 4215. I was the only black guy who had a jury trial, so that lets you know where it stands at and things like that and how discriminatory it is. But repeat to all my 750,000 viewers out there, it's about jobs, just like the riots was about jobs. That was the bottom line. It was about jobs, jobs, jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Our next speaker is Mr. King. Matt Dowd, looks like you're writing Mr. King, going once, going twice. Is there Hilton mate? Matt Dowd?
It's Parrish Hilton, mate. Okay, I've got a couple of things to cover. First of all, all the people who want to smoke pot and come down here to the city council, the people you need to go and see, talk to the Marijuana Policy Project. They're a Washington DC-based organization, page B3 of the LA Times. They will give you money to get that proposition on any of your local ballots. I'm coming for the Board of Information Technology Commissioners. I couldn't make their meeting on Friday, but I want to get this wide-angle thing fixed here. We deserve a close-up, just like anybody, so you can see how angry I am on my face. But I'm coming for you guys. I see that City Council got a raise, okay? $171,000, $3,500 a week. I estimate that to about $71 an hour, which means for the six minutes I talk in here, you're only getting $10 each. That doesn't sound like enough. But I work it out. If there's 12 of yous here, that's $120 an hour, okay? And if you add the clerks and the staff who are waiting here and the power and Channel 35 times, it's probably up to at least $200 an hour, and there's three of us doing it. So let's say it's three days, it comes to like $2250 a week, and the meter's running, and we're up to $58,500. The city's paid you to listen to me so far, and it's ticking. Wendy Grohl, she's after some parking people, too, trying to get the parking violations paid. Hey, I'm one of those. Come and talk to me. I'll show you why you're not getting the money. I've been documenting it for months. There's anomalies. They're incompetent. Now, I've tried to talk to Yvette Rojas, and no reply on that email either. So come talk to me. I'll help you out.
Chuck Tenon is our next speaker. And then Greg Fuentes will be next.
Good morning, LA City Council members, Chuck Tenon, Valley Village. I was at Herb's Housing Committee meeting with a really packed house, and a lady made a comment, "We rent because we can't afford to buy." But we came up with a plan called the CTNW Assistance Program Proposal in the works that I presented to the Housing Commission. The commissioners are going to put it on their agenda. It's a plan that can work to curb existable affordable housing and sound buildings and give a cushion to the new affordable housing. And what it is essentially is a buyer buys the property, sells the improvements to the tenants, still owns the land. The city subsidizes to the developers, and the developers subsidize to the tenants. They do this in Palm Springs. The Indians own the land. Marina Del Rey, the county, owns the land. But the good thing is, here is the 2007 Affordable Housing Trust Fund, $100 million one there. Guess what? They subsidize a developer $90,000 for a one-bedroom apartment. We have 30 in our building. That's a lot of money. Why can't the tenants own the improvements? The buyer owns the land in conjunction with the city and subsidize on that, and everybody's happy, and you keep the existing affordable housing and sound buildings and cushion for the development of new affordable housing in this city. And we're putting this together, and I'd like to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tenon. Appreciate those comments. We look forward to reading that. Greg Fuentes is our next speaker. Welcome to City Hall.
Good morning, council members. My name's Greg Fuentes. I'm a longtime city resident, also a cable subscriber. This city council has demonstrated the desire to bridge the digital divide over the years. And one of the things that this council did in 1999-2000 time period is to put in their transfer ordinances a requirement that cable operators provide free high-speed internet access to city buildings such as libraries and schools. So I was listening to a Board of Information Technology Commissioner meeting on September 29th, where a board member asked ITA if there was a requirement for free internet access to libraries. Their response was no. I found that disappointing. So I have penned a letter to Councilmember Cardenas, and I would like you to follow up on this letter. Second issue concerns Time Warner Cable, which has, as many of you know, is in the process of making many changes to the cable's channel lineups, the prices, and they are in fact dropping some channels on certain tiers. I live in West Los Angeles. I received a notice on October 21st regarding changes to be made on November 7th. Now, if that's the only notice that Time Warner put out, it would be violative of city law, state law, and federal law. So I'm also asking ITGS to look into this matter as well as some other problems with that notice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Appreciate your testimony, and that closes our general public comment. Again, remind our viewers and any of our visitors, general public comment is for items that are not on the agenda but that people would like to bring to our attention that are under our jurisdiction, and we appreciate all members of the public who come down here to give us that public comment or to Van Nuys. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
First items on the agenda, Mr. President, are items noticed for public hearings. Items 1, 2, and 3 are street lighting ordinances.
Okay. Colleagues, we have 1 through 4 before us right now.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Actually, it's only 1 through 3.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And item number 4, no action is required. That was already adopted by council.
Okay, so items 1 through 3, colleagues. Anybody wishing to be heard on those? Let's open and close the public hearings on them. If nobody wishes to call those special, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
And item number 4 has already been acted on.
Yes.
Items 5 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. I'd like to call item 7 special, just to point it out. Any other specials, colleagues, on items 5 through 5 and 6 and 8 and 9? Any specials? If not, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 10 through 31, 10 votes are required for consideration, and I believe there are cards on 12, 25, and 26.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. Colleagues, any other specials from those items? Specials, going once, going twice, on the balance, let's take those up. Please open the roll. Close the roll. If there's 12 of yous here, that's $120 an hour, okay? And if you add the clerks and the staff who are waiting here and the power and channel 35 times, probably up to at least $200 an hour. And there's three of us doing it. So let's say it's three days, it comes to like $2250 a week. And then the meter's running and we're up to $58,500. The city's paid you to listen to me so far. And it's ticking. Wendy Gruel, she's after some parking people too, trying to get the parking violations paid. Hey, I'm one of those. Come and talk to me. I'll show you why you're not getting the money. I've been documenting it for months. There's anomalies. They're incompetent. Now, I've tried to talk to Yvette Rojas and no reply on that email either. So come talk to me. I'll help you out.
Chuck Tenen is our next speaker. And then Greg Fuentes will be next.
Good morning, LA City Council members, Chuck Tenen Valley Village. I was at Herb's Housing Committee meeting with a really packed house. And a lady made a comment, "We rent because we can't afford to buy." Well, we came up with a plan called the CTNW Assistance Program Proposal in the works that I presented to the Housing Commission. The commissioners are going to put it on their agenda. It's a plan that can work to curb existable, affordable housing and sound buildings and give a cushion to the new affordable housing. And what it is essentially is a buyer buys the property, sells the improvements to the tenants, still owns the land. The city subsidizes to the developers and the developers subsidize to the tenants. They do this in Palm Springs. The Indians own the land. Marina Del Rey, the county owns the land. But the good thing is, here is the 2007 Affordable Housing Trust Fund, $100 million one there. Guess what? They subsidize a developer $90,000 for a one-bedroom apartment. We have 30 in our building. That's a lot of money. Why can't the tenants own the improvements? The buyer own the land in conjunction with the city and subsidize on that and everybody's happy and you keep the existing affordable housing and sound buildings and cushion for the development of new affordable housing in this city. And we're putting this together and I'd like to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tenen. Appreciate those comments. We look forward to reading that. Greg Fuentes is our next speaker. Welcome to City Hall.
Good morning, council members. My name's Greg Fuentes. I'm a longtime city resident, also a cable subscriber. This City Council has demonstrated the desire to bridge the digital divide over the years. And one of the things that this council did in 1999-2000 time period is to put in their transfer ordinances, a requirement that cable operators provide free high-speed internet access to city buildings such as libraries and schools. So I was listening to a Board of Information Technology Commissioner meeting on September 29th where a board member asked ITA if there was a requirement for free internet access to libraries. Their response was no. I found that disappointing. So I have penned a letter to Councilmember Cardenas, and I would like you to follow up on this letter. Second issue concerns Time Warner Cable, which has, as many of you know, is in the process of making many changes to the cable's channel lineups, the prices, and they are in fact dropping some channels on certain tiers. I live in West Los Angeles. I received a notice on October 21st regarding changes to be made on November 7th. Now, if that's the only notice that Time Warner put out, it would be violative of city law, state law, and federal law. So I'm also asking ITGS to look into this matter as well as some other problems with that notice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Appreciate your testimony. And that closes our general public comment. Again, remind our viewers and any of our visitors, general public comment is for items that are not on the agenda but that people would like to bring to our attention that are under our jurisdiction. And we appreciate all members of the public who come down here to give us that public comment or to van eyes. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
First items on the agenda, Mr. President, are items noticed for public hearings. Items 1, 2, and 3 are street lighting ordinances.
Okay. Colleagues, we have 1 through 4 before us right now.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, it's actually it's only 1 through 3.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And item number 4, no action is required. That was already adopted by council.
Okay. So items 1 through 3, colleagues. Anybody wishing to be heard on those? Let's open and close the public hearings on them. If nobody wishes to call those special, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
And item number 4 has already been acted on.
Yes.
Items 5 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. I'd like to call item 7 special, just to point it out. Any other specials, colleagues, on items 5 through 5 and 6 and 8 and 9? Any specials? If not, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 10 through 31, 10 votes are required for consideration. And I believe there are cards on 12, 25, and 26.
Okay. We'll call those special for cards from the public. Colleagues, any other specials from those items? Specials, going once, going twice, on the balance. Let's take those up. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are on the continuation agenda, items 32 and 33.
Okay.
And those are public hearing items.
Okay, 32 and 33. We'll open and close the public hearings on those. Anybody wishing to call them special? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 34 through 40.
Okay.
And there are two reports on item 40. And I believe council can adopt both. Budget and finance concurs with an additional instruction.
Okay. Ms. Gruel?
Yes, if we could, on item 34, although we had a public hearing committee, we had a number of people came down today, so I'd ask if you could call that special.
Call that special.
For short public hearing. And 37 for Mr. Lavange.
And 37 for Mr. Lavange. Mr. Padilla.
I'd like to send item number 5 forthwith.
Okay. There's no objection. We will send 5 forthwith. Any other specials, colleagues? On 35, 36, and then 38 through 40, with both motions being moved on 40. Mr. Parks?
Yeah, we're going to move both reports on 40.
Yeah, they said there is no conflict, so we'll move both of them. There's no objection.
Objections on the budget and finance.
Okay. Great. We'll make sure that those are in there. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 41 through 67.
Okay. And we have cards. We'll open and close the public hearings except on items, let's see, we've got 60, 62, 63, and 65 as well. Let's...
And, Mr. President, was there a card also on 67?
There is a card on 67 as well. Let's call those specials for cards. And the rest of the public hearings will open and close. Any specials, colleagues, on these? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote on the balance.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 68, and that's closed session item. And I believe there is a request to continue that matter to November 14th.
Yes, this is the Jones matter, colleagues. We're going to continue that if there's no objection until the 14th of November. Okay? So ordered. Next items?
That would take council back to the items called special. First item called special was item number 7, and that was called special by Council President Garcetti.
Okay. Why don't we hold that on the desk and I'll switch out with somebody in a sec?
Next item then was item number 12, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Card first, starting with Matt Dowd on item number 12.
Thank you. This is, we're back to this trash item and differentiating between what are people's personal property and what's trash. And I know a lot of their stuff looks like trash, and that's because they're on Skid Row. And they need help. They don't need the police carting away their trash or calling the city in and removing all their property. So I've said it once before, find these people a place to go or leave them alone. It's as simple as that. It's what the judge said. Just find them a place. Is someone looking at the surplus property? And the meter's running? $58,600. Matt Dowd, thank you.
All right, if Michael Hunt's not here, we'll go to Zuma Dog.
Oh, yes, I would just like to bring attention to the fact this regards the Safer Cities Initiative, Skid Row enforcement. If you look at the daily news, a lot of people don't read the papers much as they used to. Circulations are down, but they have an article on this. What was happening now is we're having dispersion. We're having dispersions now through all parts of the city with the homeless. So I'm not passing judgment on the enforcement. I'm just saying it used to be contained within Skid Row. So now people like in Santa Monica, all parts of the city, it's dispersing. So I'd like to say that please, we need community outreach programs. We have a lot of those in place, and we just need to use them better for the purposes they're intended. And also regarding affordable housing, which I think would help this as well, there's something that the city has in these ICOs, interim control ordinances, that mandate with all these condo conversions that one-third of affordable housing be set aside for the lower and middle-income homes. So that solves the affordable housing crisis right there. I know you want to pass Proposition H. It'll pass on, you know, a billion dollars to taxpayers for the next 20 years. But I think part of Safer Cities is affordable housing. We can institute that now by simply sticking to the rules that are already in place, laws. We talked about it upstairs a few minutes ago in the Housing and Economics Committee. So I'm not even talking about doing anything new. Look at the ICOs that the council members have put in because we have condo conversion crisis happening in this city now. And the ICOs mandate that one-third of all new condo conversions housing be set aside for affordable housing. So that will help right there as well. And also the social services, please, we need to reach out. We have dispersion through all communities now due to the enforcement of Skid Row. It is a real problem. And I'd like everything, every government, and also the people, we need the people to outreach as well. We can't just have the government solve all our problems. So do something about this, people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. We have next Veronica Perez Becker. Ms. Becker?
Hello, I'm Veronica Perez Becker, Vice President of Legislative Affairs for the Central City Association. I'm here to express CCA's support for increased services to clean up Skid Row. One of our top priorities in downtown should be to provide safe and clean streets for our residents, visitors, and businesses. However, the current conditions of the Skid Row area are appalling at best. Heaps of trash line the streets, feces is piling up in the gutters, and bugs and other animals infest the area. These conditions leave anyone coming into direct or indirect contact with Skid Row, including residents, firefighters, police officers, and the homeless, vulnerable to infectious diseases such as the Skid Row staff epidemic that was recently highlighted in LA Weekly. The dire conditions of Skid Row is a threat to public health and must be addressed immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. I'd like to close the public hearing now and recognize Councilwoman Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am appreciative of the fact that staff is here, city attorney and at all are here to report today. And I think what might be more efficient and more useful is to let them make their report first, and then I'll kind of come behind and fill in the gaps.
Okay.
With questions.
Okay.
Good morning. I'm Assistant City Attorney Teresa Stamos. I head up the General Counsel Practice Group. I'm joined by my colleagues Jeff Isaac, Chief of the Criminal and Special Litigation Branch, and Assistant City Attorney Chris Westhoff, General Counsel to Public Works. We were asked to report on the clarification of guidelines to building, I'm sorry, Bureau of Street Services and LAPD distinguishing between personal property and debris that can be removed by the city. This is, of course, a very complex issue requiring efforts on the part of not only our office but Bureau of Street Services and LAPD. And the debris that's on the street isn't just the result of the homeless population, but we've been advised that businesses recently are a very significant part of it. So in our present, in our report today, we're going to address not only the efforts and the different scenarios that the city encounters in removing the debris that's the result of the homeless population, but also business enterprises as well. And with that, my colleague, Mr. Isaacs, will begin.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Jeffrey Isaacs. I'm the Chief of the Criminal and Special Litigation Branch of the City Attorney's Office. As part of the Skid Row Safer Cities Initiative that's sponsored by the Mayor's Office, the City Attorney's Office, and LAPD, it is important to clean up the streets, and that is in the sense of disposing of trash and debris. That's a specific part of the Safer Cities Initiative. In addition, protecting and safeguarding the property of the homeless is also a specific part of and an important part of the Safer Cities Initiative. We've distributed to members of the council, and I believe it's available to the public, some documents that are relevant. And that is a March 1st, 2006 letter that was distributed to business owners in the Skid Row area, and then a series of photographs taken by LAPD just within the last week. And the point of the letter and the point of the photographs is that the problem of trash and debris and the health hazards that they create is and should not be solely attributed to the homeless population in the Skid Row area. In fact, LAPD has advised us that they believe certain commercial establishments, certain businesses on Skid Row actually play a greater role and are a larger contributor to that problem than the homeless population. So we wanted to start off by making the council aware of the least one aspect of the problem of trash removal. And that are, and that is the problem that is being created by some of the commercial establishments that are dumping their trash in the sidewalks or on the sidewalks in the street, in the curb area, and creating and contributing to this significant problem. And I'm here to advise the council that as part of the Safer Cities Initiative and working with LAPD and the Street Services, Bureau of Street Services, we are now going to increase our enforcement of the various city ordinances that make this illegal as well as Health and Safety Code Section 11755, which makes it a misdemeanor for any person to place, deposit, or dump, or possibly place, deposit, or dump garbage in or upon any street, alley, public highway, or other public area. And what we've asked LAPD to do, and what they've agreed to do, is begin documenting cases in which business owners are dumping trash into the streets or on the sidewalks, citing those, and then presenting it to our office for prosecution. And we intend to prosecute and seek penalties, which could be significant fines and possibly time in county jail. So I think unless there are any questions on that aspect of our presentation, our report, I will return it to Ms. Stamos.
Okay. Then in, thank you, Jeff. In addressing then the three scenarios pursuant to which LAPD or Street Services removes debris or personal effects of the homeless from the streets and sidewalks would be in the event of a regularly scheduled street cleaning, an LAPD arrest, or in the event that the local bid, Central City East Association, would remove it pursuant to certain protocols that they have in place. So first, starting with street cleaning, we've been advised by Street Services that their regularly scheduled cleaning is as follows. The streets are cleaned every morning, and the sidewalks are cleaned pursuant to posted notices which provide for street cleaning between the hours of 8:00 and 11:00 a.m., Monday through Friday. They are general notices in that they're not street-specific, they're sort of area-specific, and provide notice that a street cleaning could, it could occur any time during that period. Specific stretches of sidewalks, therefore, do not have regular, are not on a regular schedule. So certain sidewalks or stretches could be cleaned, they're cleaned on an as-needed basis, and the frequency can vary greatly within the Skid Row area. Here's where the Street Services has reached some difficulties at times in distinguishing what it can haul away as part of that regular street cleaning and what should be respected as the personal effects of the homeless. In looking at case law to assist Street Services in making these calls, there's, we're just provided by, with little guidance by the courts. And instead, let's just say insufficient guidance in order to base a long-term program, you know, on making those judgment calls in the field. There is, however, some case law and also previous litigation by the city that resulted in a consent decree. It was the Binion case in the 80s, where the city went to a notice-oriented approach in removing debris from the streets. We're in discussions with Street Services about returning to this notice-oriented approach because we think in the long run it would be more successful and alleviate the burden of making judgment calls in the field. In order to implement that, we are, we would need to work with Street Services to evaluate our existing notices and make sure that they're sufficient and detailed enough to comply with what the courts have given as guidance as being sufficient enough notice. In Chicago, in the case of Love versus the City of Chicago, the city there in seeking to clean Whacker Drive, which was a popular congregation area for the homeless, the court there found that it was sufficient for the city to post 24-hour notice, followed by a 12-hour notice, and then followed by a team going out in 20 minutes to an hour in advance and notifying the homeless that cleaning was about to begin. The homeless would then move their belongings to a safe zone. In this case, it was off on the opposite side of the street that would not be cleaned at the same time. And anything left remaining would then be picked up by the city. Okay, the next area that involves removal of items from the street is when the LAPD engages in an arrest, and my colleague Chris will briefly address that.
Thank you. Councilmembers, one of the issues that was raised in a meeting with the Central City East Association a couple of weeks ago was the fact that we have obviously a larger police presence on Skid Row and that essentially what LAPD was doing when they made an arrest, the homeless were getting to make a choice which of the property in their possession was going to be their personal property and which would remain and ultimately be trash left on the street. LAPD would then take that amount of property designated as the personal property of the person who was being arrested, and they would deposit it in the Central City East warehouse that has been established a couple of years ago. There's an area in that warehouse that is set aside where LAPD has complete control over it via locked doors so that they can then deposit the personal property of any arrestee after the arrest. The problem was that the material that is left out on the street that is then trash, one of two things happens. Either it scatters to the wind or the homeless use it as, you know, a means of rummaging through it to claim what has been left on the street. Central City East believed that they did not have the resources to address this, and this is a resource allocation situation in that at the present time, there are no Street Services crews available to respond to an arrest situation by LAPD. What was suggested, and it was a suggestion made, you know, to council office, is that the council appropriate sufficient funds for Street Services to, in essence, have a dedicated crew available so that when LAPD made an arrest, they could separate out the personal possessions, book those possessions into the warehouse, and then by radio, call a dedicated crew who would then respond so that that material one would not either scatter via wind or be rummaged through by the remaining homeless on the street. And that's something that Street Services will need to address with the council relative to any budgetary issues that they have in order to establish that dedicated crew to deal with the arrest situation. But we believe that that is a viable solution because what LAPD is doing when they make the arrest is they're having the homeless person sign a release for all the material that is left on the street, and they're taking a photograph as well so that we have some documentary evidence to defend a claim that could be filed later on that we disposed of the personal property of that particular arrestee. And we think that is a viable solution to the arrest situation.
And then lastly, CCA has in place protocols for removing abandoned property on the street. They typically, they tag the property three hours before removing it, and then once they remove it, it's warehoused in their local warehouse for at least 60 days. Obviously, the more resources that the city devotes to street cleaning and its regularly-scheduled cleaning of the sidewalks, the less abandoned property would be on the streets because presumably if it was attended, it would be moved to the, to a safe zone and continuously attended by the owner. owner. So, you know, what we've heard consistently from both LAPD and Street Services is that there's, you know, definitely a resource issue here that's contributing to the problem. Finally, I'd like to mention that there are just, you know, a global issue, which is that of unsanitary items or items that present health hazards and how do you address those? There's understandably a reluctance by LAPD to book hazardous material into a warehouse or Street Services even to allow it in safe zones because not only the health risk to the homeless population, but to, you know, the public at large. It's here where we're seeking to work with the county health department to develop guidelines to facilitate the removal of this property and, you know, have proper protocols and procedures in place.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions. On the issue of picking up trash, I understand from Street Services there, there's often a lag time. What's that lag time based on?
There might be a representative, lag time between what?
Bagging it and then picking it up. Why does it sit on the sidewalk? Does anybody know?
Is this on an arrest?
No, this is just going through, cleaning, posting, whether a person's arrested or goes in for services, either way. If the items remaining are bagged and then sit on the sidewalk for hours or days, what basis do they sit there? Maybe we need somebody from Street Services to come up. Okay, there's somebody from -- can you hold my time, please?
Bill Robertson, Director of the Bureau of Street Services. Currently, the Bureau of Street Services does not pick up any bagged material. If we were to implement the additional resources to have the crews available for LAPD, it would just be a matter of 10 minutes because once we get the radio call, they would respond to that location, wait for the property to be separated, what is personal, what is trash, and then we would haul away the trash at that time.
And then who does the bagging?
That would be LAPD.
Okay, so then it will stay there until somebody reclaims it, or if they don't, then what happens to the bag?
Councilman, I think there, if it's personal property of an arrestee, LAPD has the responsibility at that point to book it into the warehouse, so it would go immediately with the arrestee to the warehouse. If it's trash that's left on the street, the anticipated solution to that is that, again, if with a dedicated crew, Street Services would respond within 10 minutes of the call and hopefully have that material out of there before LAPD is done with the booking on the arrest and the process.
Bill, if you could, talk to us about whether you can put together a proposal for a 24-hour service model and a budget for that to prepare for the extra resources needed.
Yes, as a matter of fact, we have discussed in our conversations with LAPD, rather than a 24-hour response, they're seeing that the arrests primarily in the late morning hours aren't as many, the heavy periods are actually during the day, and then the evening hours up until about 11:00, 12:00 o'clock. So we would actually run basically an 18-hour shift throughout the daytime and the late evening hours. We'd have a two-man crew for each shift along with a dedicated investigator that would be working with those two individuals, and roughly the initial cost we came up with is about $250,000.
How long will it take for you to put that budget together?
I'll have it by the end of today.
Okay, let's hurry up on that. Now, how often are the sidewalks cleaned?
We, the city does not clean sidewalks.
Can you say that a little bit louder?
Yeah, the city does not clean sidewalks. Sidewalks are actually the adjacent property owner's responsibility, not only to clean, but to maintain. The only instance in the city where we clean sidewalks right now is in the Skid Row area.
Okay. And how often are the sidewalks in the Skid Row area cleaned?
We have, all the streets are posted from 8:00 to 11:00. And what we do, working with LAPD, we identify the key areas that need cleaning. So as the homeless encampments may move from street to street, we target those streets that need the cleaning. Some streets where you have no homeless do not get cleaned maybe but once a month as the homeless move into that location.
Now, is there a gap in clarifying the guidelines for cleaning a sidewalk and disposition of the materials on the sidewalk? Is that unclear to the workers?
Yet the reality is that the role in the cleaning is that we are responsible for the actual cleaning. LAPD is there to assist us and provide the enforcement arm to get the people to move and actually to protect our crews as we're cleaning. The reality is, as we go into these areas, because of the limited posting, which is only 8:00 to 11:00, plus the inefficiency of the cleaning because you have to give the homeless time to move their possessions to the safe zone, which is across the street, the number of streets that you can clean within that three-hour window are very few. So what we try to do, working with LAPD, is identify those hot areas where we have the largest congregation of homeless and the biggest mess.
Okay, this is a quick question for Chris. How long is it going to take to develop these guidelines with clarification language in it?
Well, and again, what I think we're seeing, and again, as Ms. Stamos pointed out, there's not a lot of bright articulated lines of demarcation in the case law, there's not a lot of guidance from the courts. We think that notice is a key important factor in everything that we've read, and quite honestly, it was the cornerstone of what happened back in 1987 when the case was filed against the city and we settled. What we've done is we've sort of set up a general posting, it's 8:00 to 11:00 on every street. In our minds, we need to refine that a bit so that we're a bit more specific about which sides of the street get cleaned when, and we're going to work with them to sort of effectuate that. Right out of the box in '87, after we signed the settlement agreement in the case, we used temporary signage. And then they went to these, in essence, posted almost like no parking signs where that are permanently posted on those streets, which literally say 8:00 to 11:00 sidewalk cleaning. There's an issue with that as to whether or not that is sufficient notice or not. And so we want to tighten that up a little bit, work with Street Services to come up with a better way to articulate that, and then see about whether we need more notice going out before the Street Services crews get out on the streets so that we don't have some of the tie-ups that happen today where we get there at 8:00 and the homeless haven't moved yet. So you may want to start a little bit earlier on the notice in the morning so that it gives a full three hours or whatever time we articulate in the notice. In addition to those postings, the city pursuant to that settlement agreement, and I believe still today, could go out and do special cleanings at any time. In the injunction that the Board of Public Works could articulate when special cleanings were, we're not subject to that, but Street Services, again, upon 24-hour notice of posting, they could put temporary signs and do additional cleanings if they had the resources to do that. So we're not limited to just one cleaning per day or one cleaning per week. We have the ability upon 24-hours notice to go out and clean whenever staff has the resources to do it. So we expect to work with them within the next week or so to sort of tighten up the notice provisions and to articulate different days for different sides of the streets so that we more closely can hold the homeless to having to move when we get out there to clean streets.
Okay, and I look forward to your budget as soon as possible, Bill, and then these clarifying language, Mr. Westoff, so that we can bring it through our hearing process and bring it back to council as soon as possible.
And I just might add that an essential assumption in that is that Street Services has enough resources in order to conduct cleanings on a regular enough basis so that they can comply with the posted notices.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President, and I do know that this is a very complicated issue. It's obvious we're trying to deal with a immediate impact, a short-term result, in the context of a larger policy constraints, which speaks to the codes that you're referring to. And whilst I appreciate the challenge that's before us, the fact that this area and others, like in my district, have gone through these cycles depending what the situation is, whether it's a post-riot or after a fire or after a kind of policy change that we see here in cleaning up an area like Skid Row. For me, colleagues, what's fundamental here is how we created the setting for our limited ability to move. In other words, I know our policies for cleaning up the streets, the formulas for cleaning the streets, and it sounds like the sidewalks are the only places in Skid Row. To me, it's based on our size of our districts, it's based on formulas that reflect our geography, it's based on terrain, it's not a reflection or it's not based on the number of people in an area. So, Mr. Robertson, if I may ask you, sir, if we were to change the approach to allow for the level of support needed when you have the density that you do have in Skid Row and/or in Pico Union and/or in East LA, we got 30,000 people per square mile, yet we clean it as if there's 6,000 people per square mile. Can you tell me, sir, if we changed that policy, would that help you in a fundamental way? Please hold my time.
I think the reality is, and one of the things that we've, I've been a proponent of proactive cleaning as opposed to reactive cleaning. And the reality is that under the state mandates for TMDLs, we spend a lot of money working on catch basins to ensure we collect the trash before it gets into that catch basin. The reality should be we should be spending more money with trash receptacles, additional cleaning services, so that debris never gets into the catch basin. It's a funding issue. Historically, we are funded at the same level we were 25 years ago for street cleaning. The city has grown, densities have changed, we need to identify and set new priorities specifically for those areas where we see the largest collection of trash. And I know sanitation has done a very good job in identifying a lot of those geographic areas where they're seeing a larger accumulation of trash getting into the storm drains.
See, the connection to my question in this report is that you're sharing with us the mechanics of why we see piles of trash, rat infestation, and everything else that happens in a location we have these piles of debris there. I find those piles of debris in my district, I see it in my neighboring districts all around downtown. But I also see that our districts, as small as they are and they hold 250,000 people, we get the same level of support as if we were 54 square miles in other parts of the city where the densities are not even close to what we see in this part of town. I hear what you're saying, it's a funding issue, it's how we move our priorities, but isn't there a fundamental change that has to occur to get you the resources where the problem exists? Please hold my time.
Yes, I think there is, but the reality is, again, the way we currently operate right now, especially with the illegal dumping running rapid throughout the city, very high concentrations in certain geographic areas, it's basically as needed. We primarily put those, we've identified every hotspot in the city of Los Angeles where illegal dumping takes place. Actually, each of the council districts has a map showing those individual spots, those are the spots that we go to. Unfortunately, there's more dumping and more locations than we have resources.
Right, but those dumping locations are happening where the people exist.
Exactly.
Where the densities are established.
That's true.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, I'd like to do a friendly, or I'd like to do a motion, I know this is a report, a verbal motion, would that be appropriate at this time?
If it's within the subject matter of this item, and it sounds like it is, so you could do a motion.
Okay, thank you, sir. What I'd like to do, and I'm hoping the CLA is listening, I'd like to have a motion, Mr. Jerry Orvach, a motion that speaks to how we look at our allocation of cleanup programs and services to Public Works and any other department based on the density of those locations, what it takes to move the necessary cleanup programs where the trash is piling up.
I'll second that motion.
To me, that's going to speak to how we prioritize where the people live, how they live, as opposed to our priority on the real estate and the land. We have a disproportionate sizes in our council districts. I have 13.5 square miles in District 1 with 250,000 people in it plus. Other districts are 54 square miles, if not bigger or a little bit smaller, and they get the same amount of resources that I do when their square mile density is at 6,000. So there's a reason why people gravitate to places where they think they can be in a lawless environment because the impression is that no one cares because the city is not cleaning it. So it's an environment we need to change. If we get to the trash, in the trashcans, in the sidewalks, before it gets to the gutter, like you said, then we will have changed the image of these locations and make it very uncomfortable for someone to live under the stars because they choose to, or because they're ill, or because there's a mental issue, or because an addiction issue. So is that motion fairly clear? Can I, we get that in writing? How soon can we get that back, or where does it go, to go to Public Works at that time? Would you like to come to the table, please?
Well, Councilman, we could have a written motion for you tomorrow, but my understanding is that you wanted the CLA to work with Bureau of Street Services and others to report back on allocation of resources and whether density considerations are included in that.
Yes, and so that we can correlate the trash hotspots that the service is needed so that way they're not handicapped in dealing with these limited policies that is hindering the capacity of the police to create a clean and safe area.
And I recall that Mr. Rosendahl seconded that, so if the council then adopts that, then it can be done verbally.
I appreciate that very much, and I'm hoping that supports my colleague in that quest and helps those of us who are trying to create a balanced city and one city. So thank you so much for that.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this is a topic for all of us in the city, it's not just Skid Row. I am totally in sympathy with Ms. Perry about cleaning up the neighborhood and turning it into a positive spot rather than what it is. But the reason people are there, we all know, is because there are services in the area there, and so people gravitate to where the services are. They spill over into the streets and they live in the streets. Would somebody explain to me exactly how the Safer Cities Initiative works? Explain it.
Councilmember, if I may, the Safer Cities Initiative is really just a term for concentrating --
Hold my time, please.
-- concentrating city resources, and specifically those of LAPD, the city attorney's office, and certain city agencies in a particular area. It's a project that we've applied or an approach that we've applied, that is, the city attorney's office, the mayor's office, and LAPD in a number of other areas, most recently Baldwin Village. And we've now applied it and created a program for Skid Row, which is really several levels of magnitude, greater in complexity and resources than any of the other prior Safer Cities initiatives. To give you an example, I think in Baldwin Village, there were eight additional officers assigned to that project and maybe two or three additional city attorneys, prosecutors. In Skid Row, we have 50 additional officers, 10, what we term Safer Skid Row Neighborhood Prosecutors. And it's a program that really has three components, there's enforcement, enhancement, and outreach. We started with enforcement. Later this week, we'll be having our first meeting with all the different city agencies and some county agencies that'll be involved in the enhancement aspect, and then I think late this month, we will be putting together and starting to roll out the outreach. What it really comes down to, I think, in Skid Row is this, sir. We've gone back and we looked at some of the projects and approaches to Skid Row by the city in the past, and they all seem to take what I would term as a top-down approach, trying to devote more resources and more funding to create housing and additional services and the like. And they don't seem, those don't seem to have achieved the results that were desired or -- or expected. So what we've done with the Skid Row Safer Cities Initiative, and it's not a solution to the many problems down on Skid Row, including the need for additional beds and housing, but what we've tried to do is start from the bottom up and get people, specifically officers and prosecutors and members of these agencies, out into the community, out into this particular geographic area, in order to determine what the issues really are, and then to try to work up solutions involving all the resources that we can at the disposal of the city. So, for instance, with trash and the issue of trash and personal property, we're trying to approach it in a comprehensive way. In the past, it seems like it's always been piecemeal. As a problem arises, if somebody makes a complaint, as an issue gets publicized, it's addressed. But we've actually been working on this issue and trying to come up with guidelines that will work for some time now. In fact, Mr. Westhoff gave roll call training to the LAPD's Safer Cities Initiative officers the morning of, the Sunday morning that the mayor and the police chief announced the creation of, or the launch of, the program. And what we've tried to do in this instance, by being out there and understanding the problem better, is that we realized, and this is just one example of how I think Safer Cities works and why it works well, we realized that the solution is not to require LAPD or street services employees to make the difficult distinction between is something in the custody of a homeless person trash, or is it their personal property? Courts argue over that, legal scholars argue over that. We don't want them to have to argue over it. So we tried to come up with a different approach. As Ms. Stamos explains, it's based upon notice, creating safe zones where people can keep their property, expanding the excess personal property warehouse, working with CCEA, getting additional funding for street services. So it really is a bottom-up approach. It's a very geographic-specific approach, where we're trying to concentrate a lot of resources in order to take on what have previously been considered intractable problems. And so far, it's worked in the other areas, as I think you're well aware, and it's working here. But the one thing about this Safer Cities Initiative, just as a caveat, we've never sort of started from a cold start like we have here, where one day, we have 50 new officers, 10 additional city attorneys, and a lot of attention in one area. So there are going to be problems, and it's going to take some time. But as Chief Bratton said, we're there to stay. And I think that's the key aspect, as you know, is the commitment to that area, to that community, to that neighborhood, and so that it's not just one month, three months, six months. We're there as long as it's going to take, at least the City Attorney's Office is, and I think I can speak for LAPD, the Mayor's Office, and the council as well.
I appreciate your articulation. That was really good. Could your colleague right next to you explain to me where the people will be putting their stuff? How is that dealt with?
Only one side of the street would be cleaned at a time. So again, when they're provided notice, which would be, you know, at different intervals of time, ranging from posted notices 24 hours in advance, to 12 hours advance, to just before, the homeless would have an opportunity to take their belongings and move them across the street or to a safe zone, which, I'm sorry, which would be considered a safe zone. And it's a matter of us working with street services to determine the adequacy of that and whether any additional safe zones need to be designated.
To explain to me that in the real world. It's 6 o'clock at night, or, no, let's put it this way, it's 6 o'clock in the morning. What happens?
Well, the cleaning would take place, if there's a cleaning at 6:00 in the morning, I don't know that we would designate that as the most reasonable time. But we would certainly schedule the cleaning so that we could provide broadest notice and get the word out. So we'd pick a time, we'd work with street services to pick a time that was most convenient for the homeless population. They would be on notice at least 24 hours in advance, if not more, that this sidewalk gets cleaned on a regular basis on this day. Then they would be warned at least two or three different times that a crew was about to come through. They would have the opportunity to move their belongings to the other side of the street, taking, you know, whatever they determined was important, or was there a personal effects with them.
Can that include tents and makeshift sleeping accommodations? Can it include those carts with all their belongings, all that kind of stuff?
Yes, it would, although you're touching on, I think, an other area that Merit's review, which is bulky items. And how do you address, and one of, and we are also in connection with this whole process, evaluating the extent of the problem of bulky items, you know, and obstructions on the sidewalk that maybe merit additional review and strategies for how to address those as well.
So, but in the meantime, you're basically moving it from one side of the street to another side of the street.
Right, and we realize that that's not perfect, but if, you know, if there's a, but it helps identify what is trash on the street and what can be removed by street service, as opposed to having to, street services had to evaluate each, you know, effect on the street and make that judgment call themselves.
Councilman, Central City East, in establishing their warehouse, did provide an area of that warehouse where the homeless have the ability to check their possessions into that particular warehouse. Unfortunately, at this time, all of the space that was allocated for that is used, and so there's a waiting list for that. So that is another --
So where do we put the stuff in the meantime?
Well, they're required to move it in order for us to clean, but they obviously maintain it primarily on the street. And tents and sleeping bags and other personal kind of care items for people who would be living on the street have historically been found to be the personal possessions of the homeless. That was sort of the problem that we ran into in the late 1980s when we were sued, and the injunction was issued in the binion matter, and it dealt specifically with sleeping bags, tents, and other accoutrements that the homeless accumulate by living on the street.
Now, this is either for you or Bill. What is street services enhancement of Safer City Initiative, and what funding is being used?
Currently, at this time, we're assisting the Safer City Initiative with current resources. So we don't have any additional resources. What we do is leverage the existing resources and some of the cleaning that we do on an as-needed basis.
So the motion that Mr. Reyes and I second will give us more focus and support?
Yes, it will. It'll give you a, working with the City Attorney and the LAPD, it'll give us a good look at the additional resources that will be needed to make an immediate impact in turning around and improving the cleaning effectiveness of our crews when they're in there working with LAPD.
I appreciate everybody's work here, and I appreciate my colleagues' work on it, but you know, the 800-pound elephant's still in the room. And the thing is, where do these people go? And where can they be? We're moving from one side of the street to another side of the street. We move them from downtown to Venice. I mean, I have encampments, growing up, on Third Street and Fourth Street, near public storage, right off of Rose Avenue. Some of them, I personally talked to, have come from downtown. We're just pushing them around, cleaning up one neighborhood, and I certainly want to clean up downtown, but I don't want to be the recipient of the overflow of what's going on. And my constituents are getting upset. They're coming on side streets. They're all over the place, and not as large numbers yet, but it gets more every single day. Violence has picked up, drug abuse has picked up. It's become a real problem. Have any of us thought of places or locations where we can conceivably move these people to provide some services and move from there to the ultimate solution, which of course we're all for, which is permanent housing with supportive services? Anybody looked at, instead of just moving them around, how we can really deal with this?
The City Attorney's Office has been working with Councilmember Perry's office and her Chief of Staff on some possible plans for sort of a transitional approach. But you're absolutely right. We've never said that this will take care of the problem, as I think Councilmember Perry has advocated from the start. We need at least 500 more beds immediately, because we're now moving into the cold and rainy season. So we need to be able to get people off the streets. LAPD and everybody else, I believe, understands that a big problem are the encampments. So what are you going to do with the people in the encampments? LAPD, I think, has already, is over 800 arrests for drug dealing on Skid Row. So as we believe was the problem, and in fact, it's even appeared to be a bigger problem than we or LAPD believe was the case, a lot of the problems and a lot of the reasons for the encampments are drug-related. So that was the top priority.
But help me out with this. The police in my district did a head count the other night. The northern part of my district found 203 homeless people, and the southern part saw 163 plus. They couldn't go into the encampments because they can't get inside, or into the campers, or into some of the cars. So I'm sure the head count would have been at least 200. So I'm looking at at least 400 homeless people, but I have no place to put them. What do we do?
Well, we need additional beds. We need permanent supportive housing. And as I said, these are the top-down, these are the top-down issues that need to be tackled and for which there'll need to be funding. And there's no question, you need to do that. We are trying to do, as part of the Safer Cities Initiative, make better use of available shelter beds. There is a debate. Talked to LA CAN, they believe that the shelters are filled. You talk to LAPD and some other groups, they believe that there are beds available. There is no database that would allow somebody to easily determine on a day-to-day basis how many beds are available in the Skid Row area or citywide, or countywide, and that's something that we think should be put in place. We need money in order to do that. We've costed out at about $30,000, and that should be something available to law enforcement and hospitals, so we can avoid the patient dumping situations that, we know you and the other fellow members of the ad hoc committee are well aware of. So we are trying to, again, make the best use we can of what's there, as I think is the case with street services and the other agencies.
I absolutely appreciate everybody, and I really admire Jan Perry for pushing the envelope to the point where this isn't going to go away, and she's not going to let it stay in Skid Row, and I agree with her. And we need to find solutions. Short-term, more monies to services; long-term, more permanent housing. Thank you all for your work, and thank you, Jan Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Our next speaker is Mr. Labons, and then we have Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robertson, wanted you to start with the city of Los Angeles, what year?
1984.
1984?
Yes.
And Mr. Westhoff, what year are you starting?
'74.
'74, okay, good. And Teresa?
'93.
'93. In 1974, Mr. Westhoff, how many trucksters were there in the Bureau of Street Maintenance at the time? Remember? I rise that question. You may not know the exact --
Probably very close to the same number we have today.
No, no, no. I think what, and there's a lot of good comments, and there's a lot of good challenges and all this problem here, but remains is the real serious issue of our streets in Los Angeles and the condition that people are walking through and living. It's not to be respected. I know Mr. Reyes spoke passionately moments ago, and Mr. Rosendahl, but I wanted to say in 1974, when I started with the city of Los Angeles, I drove one of the 274 trucksters, which were the three-wheelers. And they had three-wheelers that took care of gutters and curbs everywhere on Broadway. And it is a little different now, because one of the biggest challenges is, is because the re-energization of the industrial area of the eastern portion of downtown, you have more cardboard there than ever before, and all that adds to it. But there used to be people who took care of the streets of Los Angeles, and those are all gone. And members, we must stand up at some time, and Mr. Parks, when we go to the budget this spring, I hope there's more individuals we could get as a team to help street services do the job that is there. Because once we stopped doing the job, the trash kept piling up, and it became a problem. It became a problem. Street cleaning is absolutely so important value of any city, and we don't do that. And the same thing in sanitation, when they, although this is not in the downtown industrials over, when they transformed to automation in sanitation, you lost the rear member of the two-member sanitation truck, and bulky items just came up like trees all over the city of Los Angeles, because we can't pick it up. I just wanted to stand to say how important it is, especially in the densely populated areas of the city of Los Angeles, where there needs to be a focus on that, because if you leave it there, more will come. It's the broken windows concept. And this is the Safer City Initiative, so that broken windows complement should be in there to focus on this, members. It really should be there. So, and also, I think, Mr. Rosendahl, what you said too, and I got 35 seconds, but I'll take it, in the time too, there used to be a guy who used to come out every year, Mr. Rosendahl, and stand on the corner here at First and Main and yell at the LA Times at noon. And he put a white cup on his hat. I once talked to him one day, Greg Smith, we mentioned. He came, he was a snowbird. He came out here to Los Angeles and yelled, you know, and lived. And then he got back on the train, on a boxcar, and went back east. There's no more boxcars. It's all containers. So this whole thing has changed the movement of people and the challenges that they have. We have to support street services a lot more than we have in the past, members, if we're going to try to begin to deal with this problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank my colleagues, councilmembers, Rosendahl and Perry, for seconding the motion. It's making its way around the horseshoe. So, Mr. Robertson, one of the formulas I like to see, or the ratios I would like to see in your report back in making these policy changes, is the existing ratios of how many people we actually have cleaning the streets in the different dense areas compared to other parts of the city. I just want to understand the imbalance. And I want to understand the level of support you need as a department manager, so that the sidewalks can be cleaned, there's no gum, there's no trash, there's no debris where it makes people feel comfortable that they can just sit there and do nothing. So that is an element I'd like to see in your report, a very specific measure of what is the gap based on the number of people in that location.
We'd be glad to supply that information.
Thank you, sir. On a second level, on the policing aspect. As I said in committee, I was just holding on to my seat, knowing that once this took off, that there would be an overflow, there'd be an effect that would be felt in the surrounding neighborhoods, and it has happened. For some folks might say, I'm noticing now, because you got the safety initiatives, but they were always there. But I can tell you, with my deputies in my office, we've been working our areas since 1991. We were there when we cleaned up Westlake, Pico Union, where whole city streets were encampments, and now they're clean. What I see happening today are pockets that are emerging that were cleaned up for at least six to seven years, and they're beginning to crop up next to schools, next to where kids are traveling back and forth. My question to you, and if you can share this with my colleagues, how do you want, how do you want us to react to the policing? How do we become supportive? What do you have in the plans that's going to address this overflow effect? Is there anything that you have that you can share with us at this moment?
Thank you, Councilmember. And as Mr. Rosendahl pointed out, there is a tremendous shortage of beds, of shelters, of supportive housing. I know the mayor and the Mayor's Office is working hard on trying to get a plan in place. I'm not the person to address that, that will start to construct the supportive housing. We are looking at transitional, transitional solutions, but you're right, there's a lack of beds, and as long as there's a lack of beds, you're going to have people without --
You're telling me something we already know. If I may, I don't mean to be rude, but there should have been some forethought. There should have been some understanding that there was going to be a reaction. For every action, there's a reaction, that's the old saying. So I would hope that in your protocol, in your work with the LAPD, I think Captain Brandon made a good suggestion, talk to our captains, let them know where this is happening so we can move on it. But those are short-term remedies. Structurally, from a social infrastructure point of view, is anyone laying out a strategy? If not, that just means we, as a council, have to create one. If that is our homework, we'll do it. But again, someone has to take a leadership role in letting us know what is happening, what is not happening, and what needs to take place. So at this point, is there anyone talking about that, strategy?
In short, yes. I think that that discussion is going on on a daily basis. I think that is being headed by the Mayor's Office and by various councilmembers.
Which councilmembers?
Well, Ms. Perry and Mr. Weesar. Well, Ms. Perry and, and Mr. Weezer. It's, but...
I would appreciate to be invited into that dialogue, because my district is adjacent to this. The kids in my district are feeling it. It's sad to see the seniors changing clothes on the sidewalk, next to elementary school. I mean, these are the conditions we're dealing with right now. And so I'd appreciate to be invited in that dialogue. I'd rather have this conversation where we can be more constructive as opposed to, in a more, I don't think there's a confrontation, but this is, I'm venting right now because I'm frustrated. So I would hope you'd invite me to that.
And I, and I'm not intending to, to debate you, council member. Whether, I'm the chief of the Criminal and Special Litigation Branch, and we have a, a limited jurisdiction and a limited mission in this, in this instance, probably...
So you're the legal arm?
The prosecution arm, the enforcement arm.
Prosecution, enforcement, okay.
And I should add that our report today was focused on the, the direction was to focus on the removal of trash versus personal items and advice and guidelines that are beginning to LAPD and, and street services on that subject, so...
I understand, but this is in the context of the Safer Cities Initiative, which has been wonderful in MacArthur Park, but we were prepared for the overflow. We were already looking at what's going to happen in the second, the third, and the fourth blocks surrounding that core area, and, and that's what I'm trying to get at in terms of what's happening with this bigger program. There's one thing that, that you mentioned in your report, and you show the debris and the trash that's coming from the businesses. I do see, and I don't want to put on the spot, I do see Estela Lopez in the audience, and she does represent a large number of businesses. I would like, if I can have her at the podium, to ask a question, if I may, sir. I know I'm a little bit over...
Will you press your button just one more time?
Okay, I'll do that. On the next round, thank you.
But you're next speaker, don't worry. You can continue, go ahead.
Okay, I can continue. Estela Lopez, would you mind coming to the podium? I do know that when we worked on cleaning up Figaro and Highland Park, we put trashcans out there, we put receptacles. What ended up happening is the businesses there too started dumping their big box items, their all, their, their wrappings, everything that came with their wear. We had folks who were living in the top units, instead of using their own private trash for their household trash, they actually started using the cans in the street, and they were beginning to overflow like overnight. Is there an infrastructure within your organization that allows the city services to deal with the issue at hand as opposed to taking advantage of what they see is another way to, to cut down their overhead and, and dump out the trash because it's convenient for their business? Is there such a dialogue, and do we have that kind of coordination?
I thank you very much for bringing up this issue and giving me an opportunity to, to tell you what we have done in conjunction with the Los Angeles Police Department and the City Attorney's Office. We, along with the Fashion District, Business Improvement District, who are, in answer to Mr. Labange's question, we, we are the additional resources out there cleaning the streets of downtown. What we did recently, and it has been repeated over the years, is alert the business owners in the district. Now, some of them are licensed and some of them are not licensed, but those who are licensed should know that they must prove to the city that they have a service, a refuse service, to take their trash away. In the Toy District, which is the area that is most impacted by the violation of that, the city allowed businesses or properties to, to rent out to businesses in small little swap meet cubicles, in streets that are narrow, with limited access. There are not sufficient places for trash dumpsters in those streets. So you have a conflagration of business with absolutely no monitoring and no policing by the city, that these people have a place to put, to take their trash or to have someone take it from them. And so businesses have, for years, violated the law and put their trash out on the sidewalk, stuffed it into trash receptacles that are meant for pedestrian-generated litter. How does that trash disappear? Usually one of three ways. The Business Improvement District will, out of frustration, pick it up. That's not what we're paid to do. We're paid to take away the pedestrian shopper litter, but we can't see that and not do something about it, so we pick up now close to 10 tons of trash a day off of just a portion of downtown streets, the two bids that I administer. The transients come by, open up the bags, take out what they feel they can either recycle, use, sell, wear, whatever, and then the rest of it is strewn on the sidewalk. The third way is vehicles, wind, just scatters it all. It is a, a health problem, and we have tried with the police department and the city attorney to convince these merchants to do it the legal way. But until or unless, councilman, there is active enforcement by the city, these businesses consider those letters that we send them and those verbal warnings that we give them minor inconveniences. They continue along the same practice.
So in, in, two points. One is, do you feel that there's enough cooperation amongst the property owners to assess the layout of their, of their property and/or street to create locations for new or larger containers?
We, we do need to do that. Those containers also need to be locked.
I know, but do you think that property owners are in a place to work with the council office and the mayor's office to establish those locations within their area?
If it is geographically feasible, yes. Some of these streets and alleys have no place to put a dumpster and still allow for access for emergency vehicles. But logistically, philosophically, the answer would be yes.
So there's a fundamental need to look at your urban setting, your streetscape, the configuration of your circulation of your pedestrians and vehicles to identify locations for dumpsters and trash that can be secured to capture and contain all this trash and debris in the streets. So that is something, how do I do that so that this team can at least listen to what's happening and propose those kinds of structural changes so you could institutionalize this improvement? Is that something you would want to see?
Absolutely.
So, again, I will offer my chairmanship as plum to look at a specific plan that could be amended, that can help my colleague here redefine that circulation pattern, to create these containment areas for trash. On, on the second level, Mr. Robertson, if yourself and the prosecutorial team here can assess what type of vehicles, instruments can be used to impose fines on those entities that would choose to throw trash on and debris, can we increase those fines? What's the existing fine now, do we know?
Well, it's, it depends upon the charge, but it could be up to $1,000 and up to six months in county jail. In addition, there's a state law that appears to make it a mandatory fine of at least $1,000 to $10,000. But I believe what Ms. Lopez is saying, which was, is consistent with what we've determined to be the case, is that there has not been vigorous enforcement of these ordinances and state laws against businesses depositing...
Who does the enforcing?
LAPD and the City Attorney's Office. And what, and as I started off today by saying that there's been repeated efforts to get voluntary compliance. You have a copy of our letter or LAPD's letter, I believe CCEA sent at least two letters to business owners in the last several years.
I'm sorry, would increasing the fines make a difference?
I, before we increase, before we ask you to increase the fines, we believe that we need to increase enforcement. So what we're saying is, we want to start by...
How much time do you need to establish that conclusion?
That is beginning immediately.
Okay, but how much time do you need of enforcement to determine whether we increase the fines or not?
That I can't, that I can't tell you, councilman, because there's been, my point is only, and again, I don't wish to bait you, my point is only that there have been no serious fines imposed, there has been no prosecution and no attempt to impose serious fines. So it may be that $1,000 or $10,000 is enough. We'll have to see whether businesses begin to comply when we actually start prosecuting people.
Can you report back to us, to tell us what the activity's been like? How much time do you need to reach some type of a decision?
As to the fine issue, I would ask to give us at least eight to 12 weeks for LAPD to begin serious enforcement and for us to start prosecuting these violations.
So report back in three weeks?
I, I ask for eight to 12 weeks.
Well, okay.
But whatever you want to give us.
I'm always trying to cut things in half, because you always ask for more. Holidays are coming up, do you feel comfortable, Councilmember Perry?
I'd say you should, we're up to almost a lot of time.
So, two months?
What'd you say, four to what?
I'd say, I'd say at least eight to 12 weeks, because you have...
Why don't you try to get it in six?
We, we can come back, I'm just afraid we might not have that much information for it.
Okay, well, give us six, do it in six weeks, tell us what you have. Based on your findings, we can either increase it, not increase it, or give you more time. The point is, something has to happen. And the message has to get out that it's not acceptable to throw your trash, your boxes of debris on the sidewalk, create manifestation, and harm the public. It's not acceptable. So, if you may, come back in six weeks, let's schedule that, we'll get your report back, and then we'll make a decision at that time.
And thank you, we'll be glad to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. I wanted to recognize that we had in chambers here, and I was going to wait for this item to be done, but unfortunately, fortunately, because we've had a very good discussion, we haven't had a break to be able to recognize a very important journalist that was here. She had to just depart, but I wanted to recognize, and we have many of our friends from the Bay Ridge, Los Angeles Sister City Association that are here, May Chidiak, who works for the Lebanese Broadcasting Corporation, where she's a television anchor. She had an assassination attempt against her life in April 2005. She was very nearly killed, but was seriously injured by a car bomb, and detonated as she entered her car. A part of her left leg was blown off, and her hair and clothes were set on fire. She made a pretty miraculous recovery, and it was a great honor to have her here. She has come to the United States and received one of the three Courage in Journalism awards presented by the International Women's Media Foundation. She's also been recognized by UNESCO, by awarding her the UNESCO Guillermo Ocano World Press Freedom Prize in May in recognition of her courage and recognition that journalists throughout the world really do put their lives on the line to, to report on the very basic truth, so it was an honor to have her here. Our next speaker is Mr. Labange, and then Mr. Rosendahl. And colleagues, I would just politely remind us, this has been a very good discussion, we've been on this for about an hour and 15 minutes, and we have about 19 other items to cover. Mr. Labange, and then Mr. Rosendahl.
Very quickly here, I, I think what we need to do in the long range, looking at this issue, is maybe from the Caesar Chavez all the way to the Santa Monica Freeway, from, from maybe Olive all the way east, and create a downtown transit zone, we got to get sanitation involved, because the drains are so important. We got to look at what street services does in this issue here. And also, I think, I got to ask another friendly amendment there. You have Mr. Robertson looking at what the resources are. Could I ask that the city clerk look at what bid resources there are? Because the bids provide a tremendous amount of service over and beyond what the city provides. So that's a friendly amendment, is that okay with everybody's friends with that? That the city clerk be directed to find out what bids are in this area?
It will be accepted as a friendly amendment.
What bids do citywide? But if it's there, people will find it there, and we have to be, with all the gates that are now on the drains, do you like the gates on the drains, Mr. Westhoff?
I'm not sure, councilmember, it's a question of like, but they are part of our structural BMPs to try and comply with the trash TMDL.
Correct, and we got to clean them.
Correct, oh yeah, absolutely.
And now they've created an engineering problem, because the sweeper that used to be able to go down the suite could get right up there and pick it up. Now it, it stacks up there in a very large pile, and a sweeper...
And we have to get out there and clean it.
A sweeper could pick up individual pieces of trash, but when it's all cluttered together, it's a different type of mechanism that picks it up. And if you want to see something horrible on Halloween, go to the drain down at the Sixth Street Bridge and look at all the debris that comes out of downtown, through the city's draining system into the river. And we talk about what we're trying to do around here to clean up the city, it's a focus that we need to do. But Ms. Perry, I think we should look at downtown and, and all that area, what we could do to help you with the overburden of, even the commerce now with containerized shipping, all that cardboard, you know, we should have a recycling program that just does it. Maybe we should just do it. You jump, find a grant that just be aggressive. And I think the only way you get people's attention, and I don't know, someone mentioned about the small businesses and merchants, if they're hooked up to the power system, you turn the power off until they get focused on complying to the law. I will close this, this thing real quick. I'm on a train, in 1978, Mr. Westhoff, and I meet a guy from Australia, I'm in England, he's right there in front of me, he say, he's on his way to Singapore. And he said Singapore's a fine city. And I goes, what do you mean a fine city? You do anything in Singapore, they give you a fine. You drop a cigarette butt, they give you a fine. You drop a piece of paper, they give you a fine. I don't know if we want to be a fine, that fine a city. I know we are a fine city. But I do know, I bet you, there's more people, other than the program that street services runs on illegal dumping that has Duran Street, the number one dump spot in the city, which is in my district off the freeway system in there, the LA River and Griffin Park, I bet you, there's not more than twice the number of people who've been fined for littering in Los Angeles that's sitting at that table. How many people have been fined this year, councilor, you know?
I cannot tell you.
I don't think too many, because I asked the city attorney to lower the fine, because the city attorney's office doesn't prosecute people for $1,000 fines, but you guys said it's illegal to lower the fine. We got to work on this, because it all adds, it's the root of a lot of problems. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Oh yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just a question, I don't know if you guys are the right ones for it. The police have done a, a sweep in Venice the other day, but where do they put their stuff, my Venice homeless people? Can you all help me identify a place so we can do in Venice what we're working on doing in Skid Row? I mean, I don't want encampments in, in residential neighborhoods, and Jan doesn't want encampments downtown, so what kind of support can I get to help me there?
We'd be happy to work with street services to identify, and your office, to identify areas, and...
I don't need to do a motion or anything on that?
Uh, no.
Great, well, we would like you all to move forward and look at Venice, look at a location where we could store their stuff, because I want the police to continue the sweeps and not allow encampments on residential neighborhoods in Venice. And so if we get the cooperation here, we'll work in tandem with downtown and that whole concept. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, Madam Clerk, are we ready to vote on this item?
Yes, Madam President, and what would be before council is Mr. Reyes's motion. Inasmuch as this was a report item only, but Mr. Reyes did a motion and another amending motion also.
Okay.
And the motion has been distributed, and also Mr. Rosendahl's.
Motion, okay.
So I need a second for my motion? Mr. Reyes, a second, Matt.
So those two motions are before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Those motions have been approved. Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item, Madam President, is item number seven, and that was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I will be brief on this. I just called this special to let the community know, in, in the Hollywood area, that with the redevelopment agency, that we have taken a, a pool of pre-qualified artists through a competition and a jury that looked at a lot of the different arts groups that are in Hollywood, to make sure that we spread art to all communities in Hollywood, the young people that are there, immigrants, renters, homeowners alike, and some of the people that come through Hollywood. This CRA initiative will allow us to have artists that are ready, so that when we see some of the development that's happening in Hollywood, we can make sure that it doesn't just make Hollywood a museum of great creativity in the past, but something that is really producing creativity in the present as well. So I wanted to let the members of the community in Hollywood know about that, and to encourage them to get involved with some of the groups that are highlighted as pre-qualified. You can get in touch with the CRA in the Hollywood area to know who those groups are. But we've seen an explosion really of not only visual arts, but the creative arts and performances, and a lot of theater groups in particular that we've been working with, who no longer can rent spaces in Hollywood, and we are working with some of the new developments that come through to be able to provide public performance spaces. We have more theaters in Hollywood and Los Angeles than any other city in America, including New York City, and that's something that we really have to preserve, especially as our land prices go up. So I ask for your support. I want to thank the CRA for their good work in ensuring that blight is eliminated by also involving people in the arts, not just by what we build, and I look forward to unanimous support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
That item's been approved.
14, 12.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we had cards on some items, I guess, that have already been passed, so we need to reconsider those items.
Last one.
Okay, first 14 through 22 will be reconsidered. Mr. Rosendahl, you... Mr. Rosendahl, you also wanted 25 reconsidered?
No.
Okay. So, items 14 through 22, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you.
Madam President, those are before council, do you wish to take them up at this time, or do you wish to go to item 25?
I was going to actually ask my colleague, Ms. President, we do have a number of speaker cards on item number 37, some of our taxi cab drivers I know would probably like to get back to work, so without objection, if we could, yes, Mr. Padilla.
Item 40 be reconsidered, there were cards submitted from members of the public for item 40, but it wasn't called special. And I believe, there's a couple of members of the public here to speak, and they will be very brief.
Okay, so we need to reconsider that item. Madam Clerk, on item number 40, reconsider, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that item will be called special. Okay, so, on item number 37, if, like to request that, we do have speaker cards, although I don't see it here in front of me. Okay, my apologies, we're going to go to 25 first, and then we will go to the next item. Like to recognize Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President, could we ask folks to come up and talk about that?
Mr. Rosendahl, we do have two public comment cards, would you like to hear those first?
Sure, that'd be perfect.
Okay, I'd like to ask Zuma Dogg and Matt.
Yes, this is regarding relative to the Department of Water and Power, they're going to be reporting on a series of blackouts occurring in Brentwood. I'd like to say to the people of Brentwood, the reason why we're having blackout problems with DWP is, one of the reasons is because of trees in the area, and the other reason is because of wiring, there needs to be wiring. It's not due to old transformers, which is part of some of the other problem in the city. So, hopefully that'll be coming soon. DWP, man, they just got a rate hike, y'all, we're paying them more money, the executives are getting more money, we raised the fees, y'all. Let's get some of that copper wiring and tree removals we need, so we can stop having blackouts, and people can keep watching Public Access and the Zuma Dogg Show, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, our next speaker, please.
Yeah, it's, in a city that is dependent on electricity, it's really not good enough. But I always wondered why Ron Deedon had a big smile on his face every time I ever saw him in here, because he's getting paid the most. I love that, $320,000, he's on the job.
Thank you, we will now go to Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for my colleagues to know, we put a motion in the other day, because we've been getting a chronic amount of outages in the 11th District in the Brentwood area, and we've asked the city to come back and explain to us what the story is, so it's all yours.
Okay, I'm Greg Mathis, I'm the Director of Transmission and Distribution with LA Water and Power. Number one, we've had about, I've handed out a couple of handouts there, one is an outage summary, and the other is kind of a PowerPoint picture scenario, pictures taken recently in the area, has to do mostly with palm trees. We have an ongoing program at the department that we constantly review the outage statistics of all our circuits. There's about 1,600 primary or 5,000 volt circuits that we review. This is one that we have been reviewing, as you can see in the handout, we've had 10 outages since January of '03, most recently though, since December of '05, we've started deteriorating there. A large portion of these, as you can see under the cause...
Yeah, and six of them have been in '06, so far.
Right. A large number of these, even though that they say connector failed, that's the weak part of the circuit, most of these are actually caused by palm fronds. Over the years, we've changed our construction in the area, we've gone from what we call horizontal construction, which, if you laid three wires out along a crossarm, it would be this way, palm fronds can land on it and easily relay the circuit. We've gone to what we call vertical construction, they're not as apt to land on the, on the circuit and relay the circuit out. If the palm frond touches two wires, of course, it's going to take the circuit out. Things that we're required to do, we're required to keep an 18-inch minimum from all, any tree, but more than likely, we're trimming up to six to eight feet. In the case of palm trees in this area, we're trimming at 10 to 15 feet, and beyond that, we really don't have a right to be trimming the trees, however, the palm fronds continue to fall into it. We do have ongoing inspection programs for both, both the circuits, for pole inspections and tree inspections, all of those are basically done annually, the inspection programs, so we do go out and try to identify any problems in advance. The circuit patrols right now are done with binoculars, the trees are done, actually, we trimmed some of those palm trees earlier this year, and we're again having some problems already. Long story short, we have some recommendations, we can take this circuit, or we will take this circuit, and infrared it, which means that we take a special kind of camera out there and look for hotspots with connectors, that would be weak spots in our circuit, that if it did relay, it wouldn't take those particular connectors or sleeves out. Tree trimming, we've identified about seven trees only that are, we have an obligation to trim, but we're going to go out and trim as many as we think we can get away with.
Great, great.
That are close to the line, and again, that's somewhere around 10 to 15 feet, beyond that, we start getting residential complaints. We had one overload situation, that's where we had a construction on another circuit, we put part of that circuit on this, caused an overload condition, took the circuit out temporarily, that's been remedied, I believe that building's been built, and we're about ready to take that portion of another circuit off this circuit. Another thing that we're about ready to do, my colleague here, Marv Moon, is going to pass around a piece of tree wire. Most generally, our overhead construction is bare wire, it's either copper conductor, or it's steel reinforced aluminum that we use. In this case, we have a piece of PVC insulated wire, heavily insulated, if a palm frond does go over that, it's not going to relay the circuit. We already have tree wire up in the area, we will be installing more. As these trees grow up, the situation is changing, and that's why we've decided to do this.
Let me ask you about this, this particular wire that I have here, that is totally insulated and everything, and it's very strong, where do you put this?
It goes in place of our, our current conductors up there, it's, the height is about 43 feet, 43 to 50 feet in the air. Like I say, normally, it's horizontal construction, in the area, we have vertical construction. This will replace the conductor that's up there. We have to do a little bit different construction, because this is heavier than our normal bare wire.
Well, I just want to thank, Mr. President, and my colleagues for listening to this. DWP, you responded quickly, you gave us a detail follow-through, and I'm very grateful for this, keep us posted.
Okay, one last comment. This was brought to our attention, okay, but I don't want anybody to think that just that triggered this. We're ongoing, we've been working with a number of councilmen on problems of this nature, and I don't want to think, have anybody think the department is laying back on their laurels. We are evaluating these circuits constantly, obviously, your involvement here helped push this through, so thank you.
Well, I might say also, in the long run, my bigger issue in the 11th District is the infrastructure itself, and some of the transformers and some of the initial wires that have been there a long time ago need to be replaced. And I look forward to DWP, which we've asked them to give us, is how are we going to improve the infrastructure in the 11th District? What is it going to cost? What's the timeframe and so on and so forth? So, when that date comes back, I look forward to that, but I appreciate this action, thank you.
Look forward to working with you, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Ms. Gruel's asked for item 34 out of order, if there's no objection, we will do that. We have six, I think 16 or 18 cards, Ms. Gruel, so...
Yes, Mr. President, we just like 10, 10 minutes for...
A minute per speaker, or two minutes per speaker?
A minute per speaker.
Okay, okay, we'll set the clock at one minute per speaker, and I'd like to invite Samar to be our first speaker, and then Ernesto Navarez. Is Samar here? Please come up, sir. You have one minute to address the council, and then Ernesto Navarez, and after that will be Zahid Butt.
Hi, my name is Jahan Shah Samar, last name, I'm driving almost 12 years taxi. Right now, this is very frustrating for us concerning the high gas and the low fare. Appreciate that, I'm living with my mother, she's 82 years old, I'm driving seven days. I have a very bad hardship situation concerning the gas fare and then low fare. Appreciate you increase the fare as much as you can, concerning the issue, last time we had the city council transportation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ernesto Navarez? Navarez?
Hello, my name is Ernesto Navarez, I'm a member of the Industrial Workers of the World, the IWW, which has been organizing truck drivers in LA Harbor, in an industry very similar to taxi industry. This motion tries to get a cost of limit increase, but it will have, it will go down from top to bottom, top to city, it's, next to franchises, which are the companies, third is the owners, at the bottom are the workers. There is no guarantee the workers will get this money, and that's because we have so much fraud in this industry, we have a case in Klein, ITOA, they'll get the, the money, but the owner, for instance, Netabite, has a taxi, the worker's going to file an SIS aid with the IRS, the CEO of this taxi pays the worker with no tax deductions, the taxi company pays no tax deductions, we're taking it to the IRS, we will organize the workers.
Zahid, and then Satya Nehu Selassie.
Thank you, Mr. President and council. My name is Zahid Bad, and I'm with Los Angeles Taxi Worker Alliance. If you remember, we came over here exactly September 30, 2005, it's been one year and one month that we are here again after that time. I know the wheel of justice is slow, as far as is moving, that's good. I came over here in behalf of the cab driver in the city of Los Angeles, say thank you to the people who's standing behind me, and the people who are working in the city of Los Angeles, couldn't make it here today, giving us the much due meter increase today, and we really appreciate all of you guys working so hard for it. On second note, I would like to say that all of you guys have received a study from UCLA from last 10 months, and have worked very hard on it, and the cab companies and the lobbyists trying to trash it. And here is a quote that came up in LA time in August...
Sorry, sir.
August 20, 2005, and I'm just going to, just one second.
Sorry, that's all the time we have, we have to stick to one minute each, but if you give it to the guard, we'll make sure we read it. Our next speaker is Satya Nehu Selassie.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity, my name is Satya Nehu Selassie, I'm in support of the meter increase and the $15 minimum airport charge, and the $15 especially is very important to the cab drivers, which reduces stress. A lot of people worry, they want to get the short trips, and if they drive, they take most of the short trips, they will not go home with money, they will be negative when they get home. And another thing, this meter increase, the $15 minimum charge is very important, and we support it. The other one will improve our life is to clean up the corruption and lynching, and we've been trying to talk to, explain and to another, we know commissions, but they're giving us bland eyes, and I hope everybody, when this thing comes to light, they didn't hear about it, and we will appreciate your help, thank you.
Thank you. Hamid Khan, and then Betty Hung.
Good morning, councilmembers, my name is Hamid Khan with the Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance and South Asian Network. A landmark study by UCLA released in September exposed the poverty conditions, lack of healthcare, high level of hate crimes, racism, and deeply rooted financial corruption in the companies. And while this is a move in the right direction, but we are hoping that it really goes further and matches Orange County and other cities, which have a higher fare already existing. And just to follow up on Zahid Bad, that at the Transportation Committee meeting last Wednesday, the slick lobbyists and the company owners were falling over themselves trying to trash the UCLA report, but I think the litany of lies and contradiction continues, and here's a statement from Kiyat Iraney, Director of Operations, Yellow Cab, from August 23, 2005, that drivers can make probably more money working at In-N-Out Burger. Here's another quote from Neda Bayamad, who's here, who is also falling over himself trying to trash the UCLA report, that about, so we're hoping for more justice, thank you.
Thank you. Betty Hung, and then Arsal Awan will be after that.
My name is Betty Hung, and I'm with the Legal Aid Foundation and the Taxi Workers Alliance. We thank the city council, and in particular, Councilmember Gruel for her leadership in taking this step to move drivers and their families out of poverty. In addition to fair meter rates, we believe that the long-term key to moving taxi workers out of poverty while maintaining shareholders of the cab companies, which supposedly are worker cooperatives, each pay approximately $15,000 a year to the companies, in addition to thousands of dollars in special assessments, without any adequate justification or explanation of where their money's going. Shareholders don't receive financial statements or other information about their money. We recently even made a formal written request to Yellow Cab that was denied unless those shareholders would agree to strict confidentiality, that would have prevented disclosure of that information to the city.
Thank you very much.
We thank you and urge you to require the companies to open their books.
Arsal Awan, is our next speaker, Arsal Awan. And then Baldi Singh.
Good afternoon, honorable councilmembers and president, my name is Arsal Awan, I'm with Los Angeles Taxi Worker Alliance. I'm over here on the behalf of Los Angeles cab drivers for the raise of the meter and $15 minimum for the airport, and I'm here because it's not that we are demanding this thing for nothing. Los Angeles cab drivers, they are doing a unique job, it's not a taxi like the other parts of the country and other parts of the world. We are in Los Angeles, we are helping elderly people, we are helping women, those who go to the shelters, we are helping all those elderly people, those who go to the hospital and pick up the medicine, and we put their groceries inside, and it's a unique service the Los Angeles cab driver are giving. At the end, I will say, the people, those who are trying to blame the UCLA report, they are just spitting on their own face, thank you.
Baldeep Singh.
Hi, good morning, city council, I just want to request the councilmembers to approve our meter rate increase and also the minimum $15 airport minimum, this is very important for us, you know, and all of our family members, it depend on your decision today, you know, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Israel Tadesa.
First of all, I would like to say thank you for UCLA, for investigating and came up with the report, Driving Poor. With the drivers suffered by the economy, we live day by day life, the only beneficiary is the management companies, no matter what, they are collecting their dues and lease. 10 minutes late, we pay charge of $25. We are working 15 to 18 hours a day to survive. We, the drivers, deserve to get the meter adjustment, but the DOT and Taxi Commissioner and the City Council Transportation Committee recommendation, we deserve it, and we need your help, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Gurmeet Singh is our next speaker.
Good afternoon, chairman, my name is Gurmeet Singh, city councilmember, thanks. And, you know, I'm driving United Independent Taxi, I'm almost 10 years, I request you guys, raise the price, we spending a lot of money on the gas, we're spending a lot of money, everything, so please raise the price, and the, the Orange County, and also, I request you, United Cab Company, they never open the books, never, ever. I request last year, open the books, and they tried to expel me, next board meeting is 14th of November, they tried, they send me the letter, you went to the Taxi Cab Commissioner, we can expel you, you went to the Los Angeles time, we can expel you, please request those people, open the books, these people never, ever, last five years, they took more, a million, $6 million, collect the money just for assessment, they never show where the money gone, please request those people, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moges Wondemterer Teckah.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President and councilmember, as we all know, the living standard is going up from gross... As we all know, the living standard is going up from grocery store to department store, from fast food to the steakhouse. Even the housing condition is soaring. So the gas price is higher than ever. And we are, we are here to ask decent rates to make our living affordable and efficiency. And if, as one lady say, when the Delta airline pilot strikes, she says she will pay more because she doesn't want to worry the pilot, like 3,000, 3,000 miles up in the air, she doesn't want to worry about his payments. So we are having difficulties, like it's very congested. We live in a very congested city. Driving is very hard and then we are worried about our income and thank you.
Thank you very much. Milian Gabriel Jesus?
Good morning, all councilmen. And I know, Mr. President, Eric Garcetti is our support. Today, my name is Milian Gabriel Jesus. I came today, the meter increase, I'm for it. Eliminate the Bandit in the city of Los Angeles, I'm for it. Sir, cab drivers, the city of Los Angeles is better than any other state so far when I travel. But we have a confusion and a corruption in the city of Los Angeles. Number one, limo, shuttle, town car, driver, I mean, public, private car, under the table, they do business with the hotels. I don't know who monitors those. The other one is, we paid money also to the city, as a cab drivers. But what am I begging you? We all responsible. We have kids to send to school. As a cab driver, I choose to do it. Nobody forced me. But one thing I'm asking each individual City Council, to concern a cab driver issue, to take it serious, as long as we work with public service and we have responsibility to do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Amos Seganalo. Martin Chatakin will be our last speaker. Martin Chatakin, our last speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President and honorable councilmembers. Martin Chatakin from United Independent Taxi and United Taxi San Fernando Valley, the president. I'm representing 389 city licensed cabs and close to 700 taxi drivers. I want to personally thank the City Councilmembers for taking Taxi Cab Meter Rate Increase into the consideration. It's absolutely a must and it's a long time overdue. And this meter rate increase will deliver the better cars, better maintenance, and better drivers, happier drivers, more smiles to the public. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the 10 minutes. We have three more cards. Ms. Gruhl, do you want to take those? Okay, there's no objection. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. Right here. Okay. Tamara Chilot? And Netabay Ahmed will be after that.
Thank you, councilmember. Today, I just want to explain for everyone, but for the, as long as the cab company exists in this city and the City Commissioner or the City Council, I don't think they have understanding how they operate. It's a very complex issue. So I have to suggest for everyone here, and there's a professor of research that came out a few months ago, that is the first one that all of us, we should look at it, even the City Councilmember, they should look at this investigation, take a consideration, implement it, what's the problem? What the professor suggested, he has not done a forensic investigation and someone has to deal with on a complex issue. He suggests those things. I think the city should be delighted and the City Council, they should be delighted to accept that and give him a necessary tool to go on with his investigation. I believe this is very important for all of us and the City Commissioners or City Council, they should take him very seriously, this investigation. Thank you very much.
Netabay Ahmed is our next speaker.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Netabay Ahmed. I'm the president of Independent Taxi. I would like to thank you on behalf of my members. Thank the staff of DOT for putting forward the meter increase and the Taxi Cab Commission for taking the issue. And the committee especially, Councilman Wendy Gruhl and her committee. And I'm here to say thank you on behalf of my members. At the same time, I'm the Transportation, LA Transportation Group President on behalf of the industry. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gruhl?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Colleagues, before we, before us today is a taxi rate increase. And this has been something a long time coming. The Taxi Cab Commission has been debating this for a while and it came to the City Council and our committee. And in all honesty, it took way too long for the bureaucracy, all of us included in that bureaucracy, to get this forward. It's part of the Taxi Cab Index in the city of Los Angeles. It's an ordinance that sets forth a semi-annual review of the Consumer Price Index, factors that affect this Taxi Cab Index, so that fluctuations in the cost of operating a Taxi Cab are quickly and effectively incorporated into the meter rates. It's important to note that the city ride script has also been increased to meet the needs of those individuals who depend on that script to be able to get to their doctor, to the grocery store, wherever they may be. Colleagues, this is one of many action items that this council and the Taxi Cab Commission is moving forward on to address the issue of Taxi Cabs in Los Angeles. Everything from ensuring that the Taxi Cab drivers have a living wage in what they're doing to ensuring that our customers are served well by the industry at every step of the way. And as you know, we heard just recently about some of the improvements in our review with the Taxi Cabs in Los Angeles for printing receipts, making sure, again, that we have an ability to catch those individuals who, again, are few and far between, but are abusing the system. So today, this is an item that I think will assist all of us and something that both the owners, operators, and the Taxi Cab drivers all agree with today. Just an update, we, we had as well a Bandit Taxi Cabs, which are a huge problem in Los Angeles and particularly for those that are, they're part of a franchise. And we will soon be having our LAPD officer support DOT in that area as well. And it was something that we adopted here in Los Angeles, which was an increase in the meter rate to accommodate the cost associated with the hiring of those Los Angeles police officers for overtime. So I would ask for, and I vote today on this item. We do have staff present. I see them back there. If there are any questions from the Department of Transportation as well, but the time has come to be able to, I think, support the drivers and owners of this to move this cost increase forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Smith is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question I want to ask Ms. Gruhl, but I want to say, you know, as a member of Transportation Committee years ago, I saw these coming through six and nine months late. And it's really, we need to move more quickly, I think, as a city to approve these, to recognize the economic pressures on an industry. But at the same time, and I asked a question of Ms. Gruhl and all my time, if you could answer, please. The discussion about moving to a semi-annual versus annual allows for a more rapid increase on peaking of things like gasoline, yet at the same time, it's been my experience, we'll never see it go downward. And so my concern is, while we've had a gas peak here, now we're on a downward slope. If we come back in six months, we're not going to come back and suggest, I don't think, at least I've never seen it, that we lower rates because gas has gone down. The tendency is that you get it up there and you keep it up there. And so I'm concerned that every six months would not allow for a smoothing effect on economic peaks and valleys, which go up and down sometimes very rapidly during the course of a year.
And if I could, and I understand, I do want to ask staff to come up to answer that question specifically, because this Taxi Cab Index, which is more than just gasoline, it includes the other costs. We're also giving the department some authority within 5%, 6% that the department would be able to take action without having come back to council and have that problem. But if we can, maybe the department.
Robert on the loan, Department of Transportation. Actually, yes, it does have a mechanism for an adjustment upward or downward. It would be a, if it does not increase more than 5%, there would be no adjustment. So we would look at the entire taxi cost index. And if there is a 5% or greater than, there would be an adjustment. It would go back to the Taxi Commission and they would vote on it. If there was no 5% increase, then the staff's recommendation would be to leave the rates unchanged. If there was a 5% drop, then we would come in and recommend that the rates be adjusted downward.
So essentially, what you've built in here then is a smoothing mechanism like we have with our pension systems that allows it to smooth it out, so those peaks and valleys are.
That's, that's our goal.
Arrange. Okay, good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. If there's no objection, we'll go ahead and send that forthwith. If there's no objection.
To go forthwith?
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Padia asks for item 40, out of order. Item number 40, I'd like to take out of order. Would you like to take the comment cards, Mr. Padia, first? The comment cards first? Okay. Like to, we have two cards on this. Neil Dudavitz and then Rochelle Mackey. If you'd like to both come forward, we can set the clock at two minutes apiece. Thank you. Thank you for your patience and please.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I'm Neil Dudavitz, Executive Director of Neighborhood Legal Services of Los Angeles County. I'm here to, really to thank all of you for addressing the problems that we've encountered with funding of community development block grants this year. I especially appreciate the work of the Housing Committee chaired by Mr. Wesson and the Budget Committee chaired by Mr. Parks for delving into the issue. But I also want to be clear that the really difficult problem is coming up in April of 2007. And really urge you to continue to devote your attention and time to address this issue in a timely fashion, so in March or April, we'll really be able to find an adequate solution to funding of social services in the city of Los Angeles. I need to also tell you that I'm here also on behalf of a number of the other organizations who have, who have really worked diligently with all of you to make this happen. And particularly, I want to thank Betzetic Legal Services and their director, Mitch Kamen, who I know has spoken to a number of you, with a number of you on this, on this problem. Our office and Betzetic's offices are available and want to continue to work with you and the Community Development Department to find a long-term solution to the problem. Thank you.
Rochelle Mackey? Is Rochelle still here? Okay. Mr. Padia, would you like to, anything?
Just thank you for the opportunity to let Neil speak and I think we can move forward with an idea.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Mr. Gus, I know, has been very patient out in Van Nuys. We have eight speaker cards on special items. I'm going to ask Mr. Gus that we put these together in pursuant to our council rules of a total of six minutes of comments. We're going to allow you to address all of these special event motions at once. You can take up to six minutes, don't need to take all six minutes, but we're going to put 14 through 22 on the board together right now. And you can address that and we will hear from you in Van Nuys.
Your council president. Regarding the various street events that are items 14 through 22, the St. Elizabeth, Guadalupe Parade, and all of them, I don't want to see any repeats of what happened in Sherman Oaks, where Ed Boakes lost out.
Sir, I'm going to have to ask you if you can address the specific content of these motions and not compare them to the earlier comments that you made, but specifically the ones that are here, okay?
Absolutely. Okay. I would like you to call Mr. Boakes today and ensure that at the December 10, St. Elizabeth, Guadalupe Parade.
I'm sorry, sir, this is not about the specific items that are before, so this is your last warning. I'll ask you to specifically speak about those items. Just to give you an idea, there's St. Elizabeth, Guadalupe Ana Parade, the 19th Annual Harbor Holiday Parade, the Filipino Veterans Day Parade, et cetera. But if you want to talk about something else, you'll have to wait for general public comment another day.
Right. I would, I would like to encourage you that all of these events have a representation from the Department of Animal Services. Each and every event is an opportunity to save the lives. And I believe I am addressing each and every one of these events as another opportunity to reach 5, 10, 30, 40, or 100,000 people, that we should not lose these opportunities. And that part of these, when you say here in the agenda, that we have to instruct the city departments to perform such services as detailed in the motions, I think each of those motions should be bolstered with a directive to Mr. Boakes that at least 40 or 50 animals be brought there, because each one is a great opportunity, is a great opportunity to save lives. And he keeps telling us what he's doing, yet each and every one of these, of these events would be a great chance to go no kill this year. And, and it was blown in Sherman Oaks and I don't want to see that happen again. And if you called him today, he has no plans to go to any of these events. When you come to the Van Nuys City Council on Friday, I believe you're going to be here on Friday, see if he has any cogent plans for any of these events. He won't have the spay mobile, which is drastically underutilized. He won't have dogs and cats and rabbits that are going to be killed each and every day of this month and this year. And I would like to see each one of these events to be a place where a few hundred animals can be saved, a few hundred animals can be spayed and neutered, since we're paying for the spay mobile. And we shouldn't lose this opportunity to make this man who's earning $167,000 a year to use every one of these opportunities to save, to save lives. It'll make Mayor Villa Rigoza look like the problem solver he keeps telling us he is. It'll make the City Council look like hiring him is a wise decision. And if he doesn't have those answers, it's a wasted opportunity.
Thank you, sir. I think you've now gone beyond the scope. We appreciate those comments. And if we can take these items together, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Thank you. Those, those items are approved and we, thank you for the comments. Our next item, please.
Item number 26, call special for card from the public.
Okay, item number 26. One speaker card, Zuma Dog.
Yes, like, yes, like to talk about this revolve. This is about a final track map. First of all, I'd like to say we're going to have problems with track maps because the EAA, I don't believe, have we settled with the EAA yet? I don't believe that's been settled yet. So the track.
Appears to be off topic regarding. Please address the track map directly. Please address the chat map.
Yeah, well, the track map, EAA, the engineers and architects, they're responsible for drawing these up and I think we're going to have a problem not settled, so maybe we better put this on hold. But regarding track maps, also I have this ICO here. It's from, a few councilmembers have put it in. And regarding track maps, right here, it says that there is to prohibit the issuance of partial and tentative track maps because we got rampant construction condo conversions going. Am I off topic?
Yes, this is a ministerial act, a final track map matter.
Okay, well, again, the track maps, we got ICOs prohibiting these with condo conversions, so why don't we stick to the rules? Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our public comment on 26. Can we please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 37, and that was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Okay. Councilmember Labange, I'd like to recognize you for item number 27.
Mr. Klineker, if department staff could just come up real quick, I'm sorry that this got called so late because you're out there. This is the Public Works Committee report, just an FYI for everybody on establishing a program to split the cost of speed humps, the very popular 50-50 sidewalk plan that Ms. Gruhl championed. Appreciate, this is a 50-50 sidewalk, super hump, construction between the city and petitioners. Give us a little rundown, Mayor Mr. Gura, and thank you for the good job that you do.
Claire Gura with the Department of Transportation. This was a motion by Councilmember Labange to introduce what was happening with our speed hum program, in that our speed hum program was getting backlog to the point where we were not able to keep up because of our funding. The program, the motion was patterned after the very successful 50-50 sidewalk program that Street Services had, in which the property owner pays for half of the cost of repairing their sidewalk and it's done in front of their home. In the speed hum program, it would have involved, in the split cost program, it would have applied to a whole block. And the difficulty with that is that you then have to deal with the actual benefits of the whole block of the street, and then you also have to get your neighbors to go along with contributing to that. And it's all voluntary. So it's a little bit different. What's happening with the speed hum program, we have been able to get an infusion of funding in the last year and this year to help with our backlog and our backlog is being dramatically reduced. And so we, right now, are, have a very reasonable backlog, which we are going to, at the end of this fiscal year, hopefully have down to about 100. of this fiscal year, hopefully have down to about a hundred.
Now, you're telling me we can't do the 50/50 program?
No, I'm not saying we can't do the 50/50 program. It's a little bit complicated and one of the things that...
But you can figure it out because you're an engineer.
Absolutely.
That's all I'm asking. So unless, Street Services have anything you want to add to it?
Well, again, our participation, it's basically supporting the Department of, our sister Department of Transportation with the actual construction of the speed humps.
You do a beautiful job, although they're a little low on Coingas south of Melrose there, but I saw them on Plymouth, I believe you put them on, and the way that on a Saturday, the crew, they take a two-by-four and they go right across and that's wonderful. So let's really focus on this because this is what the people want. They want us to deal with traffic mitigation and they want good street services. So we'll figure it out, right Glenn?
Yes.
Good, okay. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Nobody else wishing to be heard on this? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Item number sixty, call special for card from the public.
Okay. Item number sixty is next. Michael Hunt here. Item number sixty, go on once. Go on twice. Item sixty. And then Matt Dowd is our second speaker on that.
Who sponsored it? The L.A. Fashion Awards. Rosenthal and, yeah, Rosenthal. Give me twelve ayes on this one. I think L.A. Fashion Award is appropriate.
Close our public comment. Let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote, please.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Sixty-two, call special for card from the public.
All right. Matt Dowd is our speaker. He's not here with us, so that closes the public comment. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item sixty-three, call special for card from the public.
Okay, Michael Hunt and Matt Dowd. Matt Dowd is not with us. Mr. Hunt, item sixty-three.
I'm for the Jewish people, I'm part Jewish. Go ahead, give me a twelve ayes on this one. Tabulate the votes, please.
Close our public comment on this. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
Item sixty-five, call special for card from the public.
Suma Dog.
Yes, this involves the Silmar Neighborhood Council at 13515 and a half Hubbard Street in Silmar. All right. We're going to have a lease for the Neighborhood Council of Silmar to have a meeting. That's at 13515 and a half Hubbard Street. I guess they don't get a whole building, but at least we got a half building, so I'd like to encourage everybody, the Department of Neighborhood and Empowerment, on behalf of the Silmar Neighborhood Council, to please come by. First of all, let's find out when these meetings are. I encourage everybody to make use of this new facility, Neighborhood Council. We need more people to get involved in Neighborhood Councils because it provides a chance for you, the stakeholders, to provide public input that can be then given to the council members sitting here, so it's a nice public input vetting system. They talk about a lot of things like gas leaf blowers that are still blowing off in the city when they should be banned. I know that was a topic of concern. So again, Neighborhood Council meetings in Silmar, they'll be at 13515 and a half Hubbard Street in Silmar. Contact your Neighborhood Empowerment Committee member to find out when those meetings will be. Please show up and take back the community.
That closes our public comment. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item sixty-seven, call special for card from the public.
Mr. Dog, sixty-seven.
Yes, again, with the track map, I'd like to stay on topic here. We do have some ICOs out there that are prohibiting all track maps from being built because we have...
Sir, we can't talk about that today because it's not agendized as such, so if you could speak to the specific track map...
Okay, final track map for property lying westerly of Hoyt Street. So all I'm saying is, I was reading in the ICOs, the fact that there's supposed to be a stoppage of track maps because we have rampant condo conversions. Should I pull out the ICO? It's from Senator Padilla's office. It was a great ICO and basically we, short of a moratorium, there needs, there's supposed to be a stoppage of the track maps. Let me go get the ICO real quick.
We can't speak about other pending legislation, so that will close our public comment at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry for that.
That's all right. We now open the roll on this, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused December fifteenth and nineteenth for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Weezer is excused.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Friday, November seventeenth for city business. A motion is required.
All right, that is approved.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Wednesday, November eighth to leave at noon. That meets council policy.
Okay. That excuse is granted.
And Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused December nineteenth and twentieth for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay. That excuse is granted as well.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. If there's no objection, Mr. Weezer wanted twenty-nine, I would ask twenty-nine be sent forthwith. So if there's no objection, so ordered. Now's the time for announcements, colleagues. Any announcements? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple announcements. One, the Exposition Construction Authority is having their Design Project Review Committee for the Mid-Rail Exposition Line Thursday, November sixteenth at Darcy High at 6:30. And then also I'd like to just inform the public of the number of locations in the Eighth District that's going to have the Halloween activities and we hope that young people and their families go to Van Ness Recreation Center at 5722 Second Avenue, at the Betty Hills Senior Citizen Center at 3570 South Dinkler, and that's at 2:30. The one at Van Ness starts at 6:00 P.M. Also, Dinkler Playground, 1550 West Thirty-Fifth Street at four through eight, has Halloween activities. Lauren Miller Childcare Center at 1550 West Thirty-Fifth Street also will be having at 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The Van Ness Childcare Center on Second Avenue at 2:30. Mount Carmel Rec Center at four, and that's at Seventieth and Hoover. The Epic Center at Menlo and King at four to seven, and Algen Sutton at Hoover and Eighty-Eighth and Hoover at 4:30 to 8:30. All of these are Eighth District locations for the Halloween activities.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Padilla.
Thank you. And would encourage everyone, I don't have the entire list, I was very impressed, Mr. Parks, you knew everything that was happening in all of your parks, but I would encourage families tonight, if they want an option, to go to many of our recreation centers and can call the Recreation and Parks Department. There are several in my district, I think close to a dozen, but I want to also mention a event we had this morning, actually in Councilmember Smith's office district, about safety on Halloween evening and the importance of those of you that don't have children, remember that there will be kids on the street tonight, that in fact, you know, after the last two evenings of it being dark for the first time because of daylight savings time, we ask you to be more careful. It's unusual for it to be dark sometimes when you are going home. We encourage you as a child to make sure that you stay with your parents, use a flashlight, a number of other rules, but most importantly, be safe and watch out for those motorists. And as I think Councilmember Smith staff member said this morning, try not to use your cellphone while you're driving home tonight and during on the streets where there are kids. Focus on the community and those children so that they can be safe tonight and enjoy their Halloween. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for those helpful reminders. Mr. Padilla.
And once we've shoved a lot of candy down our kids' mouths, just want to announce that together with Councilmember Weezer and the American Diabetes Association, we're cosponsoring a health fair this Sunday, November fifth, at Alvera Street, officially known as El Pueblo Historical Monument. We'll make the announcement again on Friday, but just to start spreading the word, this Sunday, November fifth, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., a health fair free and open to the public, along with entertainment. So we look forward to seeing you all there with a variety of health screenings, including vision, foot screenings, blood pressure, height, weight, all that good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Reyes.
Just wanted to take a moment and thank all the high schools. A few weeks ago, I didn't get a chance to say this, but we had over, I'd say over twelve high schools, over 600 students meet at the Convention Center from Compton all the way to the valley in Pasadena, and they literally engaged the planners and architects and what they want to see along the Riverway. It was exciting. It was the whole morning. The Convention Center was a good place because we were able to centralize it and it was wonderful to see the young kids from different classes, from different ethnic groups, from different neighborhoods, all saying the same thing. It was tremendous. And last night I had the honor to roast Dr. Leobardo Estrada, I mean, if you know him. It was a great event by New Columbus for Women. They're raising scholarship funds, resources for single parents who are doing well, they want to get ahead in life, they want to go to college, but given today's political environment with our federal resources, where we're driving it to this war everyone's questioning, very few dollars for scholarships, very few dollars for supporting our youngsters who are in need for higher education, and they're filling that void. So just want to say, give a shout out to Dr. Leobardo Estrada for being a good sport and for supporting our youngsters that way.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the Halloween trick-or-treating events, wanted to remind residents that Westfield Shopping Town, Topanga, and Victory, the newly renovated, is going to have trick-or-treating inside the mall area, so if parents want to keep their children safe and off the streets, check out the malls in your particular community. I know that Westfield will be opening up and the stores will be participating in Halloween candy. So I know that Westfield, New Topanga, at Victory and Topanga will be participating and I'm sure there's many other malls in the city and this region that will be participating to keep your children safe and off of the streets. As been mentioned, it's going to be dark tonight since daylight savings is over, so to keep them safe and let them get their candy, you know it's going to be a safer environment inside the malls. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, can I please ask everybody to rise in council chambers for our adjourned motions? Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of the four firefighters who passed away fighting the aspirants of fire. Four U.S. Forest Service firefighters were killed while attempting to protect a home that was close to where the fire began in Cabazan last Thursday. The flames came so quickly that the five-person crew had no time to retreat to its engine or to use portable fire shelters. The wind that came was described as the devil's wind. The men who were killed were Engine Captain Mark Lutzenheiser, 45, of Idlewild, Engine Operator Jess McLean, 27, of Beaumont, Assistant Engine Operator Jason McKay, 27, of Phelan, and Firefighter Daniel Hoover Nahera, of 20 years old only, San Jacinto. A fifth firefighter identified as Pablo Serra, 23, of Fountain Valley, had burns over more than 90% of his body and also had severe respiratory damage, but doctors say they removed 70% of his damaged skin and he should survive. Mark Lutzenheiser led the Forest Service's five-man crew of Engine 57 based out of the Allendale Station in the San Bernardino National Forest. Through the morning Thursday, they fought the spreading blaze. He's 43 years old, the father of five, from Idlewild, avid softball player and lover of nature who frequently took his family on outdoor adventures. He loved his job. Jess McLean was described by his brother-in-law as a man dedicated to his work and devoted family. 27 years old, he was the fire engine operator, lived in Beaumont and had seven years of service. He was a graduate of Banning High School and later attended fire science classes at Crafton Hills College. Jason McKay, the Assistant Fire Engine Operator, 27, had five years with the Forest Service and four years as a volunteer with Adelanto Fire Department. He also served on the Mojave Greens Type Two Crew. Resident of Phelan, McKay, was a certified EMT who had an associate's degree in fire science. And lastly, Daniel Hoover Nahera was the youngest of the four fallen firefighters, only 20 years old. This was his second season of firefighting. He worked in the Takwitz Type Two Crew in 2005 and was a seasonal employee in 2006. He graduated from San Jacinto Mountain View High School in 2004. May all four of them rest in peace and we thank them for the service they give and so many firefighters give to us protecting our community. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's, I think today is one of those days where we have so many people just shocking news and I have two unfortunately to ask this council to adjourn in memory of. One is Abby Spivak, daughter of Gary Spivak from MTA, those of us that have worked with him. Abby was studying to be a rabbi, active in chaplaincy and very active with Project Chicken Soup, a group providing food and other services to people living with AIDS and HIV. We offer our sincere condolences to Gary. We saw him just this week on the anniversary of the Orange Line. We were able to do that personally but thought it was important for the council to do that as well for Gary and his family, his wife Linda and daughter Allison. May she rest in peace. The other is another young woman, Angela Reyes. Angela Reyes was the daughter of Gary and Rosie Reyes. Gary is a cameraman at KTLA and they had a nice, a very thoughtful adjournment on TV recently for his daughter. She was only 18 years old when a car accident took her life over the weekend. She was called Mia by her family, meaning love by her parents, and made them and her entire family proud when she graduated last year from Bishop Alamany High School, with special awards for both academics and track and field. She was attending Cal State Long Beach where she was studying to become a TV news reporter. Her dad had had some impact on her and be involved in the business with him. Her family and friends describe her as loyal, humble, very determined, and ambitious. She leaves behind her mom, Rosie, her dad, Gary, her sister Jessica, and Amber, and countless friends who will miss her terribly and remember her always. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I'd like to join with you on that adjournment for the Riverside incident and all members on that. And also I'd like you to join me in this one. Spoonie Singh, the great one who came to Los Angeles and developed the Hollywood Wax Museum over 40 years ago, died. He had, he lived a beautiful life. He was born in India and early years in Victoria, Canada, but came to Hollywood some 40 years ago and created the Hollywood Wax Museum where lines were right around the block. He had a wife of 63 years, Chen Chil, and six beautiful children, as we adjourn in memory of Spoonie Singh. Also, members...
Thank you, Mr. Labange, for that. I'd like to join that and I know his sons who have been real institutions in the Hollywood business community and who have done a tremendous job of entertaining our tourists and he was a great founder of that museum, so thank you very much, Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Also, members, the tragedy befell the University of Southern California and the loss of Marlon McKeever, a great Trojan who played for the Trojans, three-year letterman in the late 50s, early 60s, played with the Los Angeles Rams and Philadelphia Eagles. For 13 years, he had a terrible fall in his home, a home accident when he slipped into Coleman Pass. He was the bread and butter of Trojan football and I remember going with John Ferraro to a ranch in Compton where all the Trojans were getting together. This was in the late 70s and they were having a barbecue and there was Marlon McKeever who was the pride of all the Trojan alumni football players and what it stood for, as Coach Carroll spoke of, he was the connection to the great heritage of the past and grew up in Los Angeles, went to Mount Carmel High School and then later with the University of Southern California. He was preceded in his death by Michael McKeever who died of a tragic car accident, the very famous twin brothers there. He survived by his four children of Martin Junior, Marlon Junior, Keely, David, and Michelle, and his wife Judy. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Marlon McKeever, a great All-American from the University of Southern California.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
I would just like to add, in my era, which is a little beyond you guys, is that Marlon McKeever, Mike McKeever, and Stephen Katz and Kermit Alexander was probably the greatest high school football team in that era with Mount Carmel. And they, three of them went to the pros, but you knew that when they were playing. But that would be, no matter what school you went to in Los Angeles and particularly
Catholic school, you found a way to be at the Mount Carmel football game to see those guys play. He was a remarkable person. Just saw Marlon no more than two weeks ago at an SC game, and when you meet him, he was such a genuine person, and we had talked over the years, and the first thing he always asked me when I saw him was, he'd always ask, "How is your son?", because he's always interested in the family and things of that nature. But Marlon, a great loss, I mean, particularly tragic and was falling off of a ladder or something, but-
He was just in San Pedro for the Walk of Fame on Columbus Day, which Janice Hahn and all the San Pedro Chamber does, and he was just, he was a great friend of John Ferraro and a wonderful man, Marlon McKeever.
Mr. Smith, did you want to say something? Mr.?
And Mr. Parks alluded to, we just saw him a couple of weeks ago at an SC game, and when you talk to Marlon McKeever, he was a very gentle man, very unassuming, quiet man. On the field, he was a terror, and he really struck fear in his opponents on the field. But off the field, he was a very gentle, calm, quiet man, very caring and loving man, not the kind of man you'd think would explode with such violence on the football field. And he was a true mentor toward a lot of the young people at USC, and all those who knew him will miss him.
Mr. Parks? Will all members on that? Does he have another one, Mr. Parks?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Mary Louise Simonian, born February 4th, 1946, in Oklahoma City. She moved to California when she was just two months old. She was preceded in her death by her father, Morris Bud, and her mother, Lucille Bud, and her sister, Marcel. She met her husband, Steve Simonian, many of us are aware, Steve went through the ranks and had a very illustrious career as the chief of Montebello, just recently retired as a chief of detectives for the District Attorney's Office, and currently is very active in his home city of La Habra. But they met when they were 12 years old. They married in September 65 and were married for 41 years. Steve and Mary moved to La Habra in '71, where they raised their two children. Mary volunteered for a number of community activities. She was on the Board of Directors of the Gary Center, the La Habra Boys and Girls Club. She also had a special interest in working with young children that had received injuries to their brain, and also she received an honorary service award for her many years with the PTA. Her memorial service will be held Friday, October 27th, at Calvary Chapel in La Habra.
Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have several motions. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Juana Solarsano, who passed away last night at the age of 96. She was the mother of 10 children, and so many grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-great-grandchildren, that they are too numerous to count. She was born and raised in Limone, a small town near Guadalajara, Jalisco. She lived the remainder of her life in Guadalupe, Victoria, near Mexicali. She was a strong spirit, had a great love of family and a love of life. It was noted by her family that she had a real passion for life and education. She personally raised many of her grandchildren and ensured that they pursued higher education and better lives. Her passions were her devotion to her faith and to her family, and her favorite pastime was going to Las Vegas and hitting the casinos. She will be missed, but never forgotten. She is survived by her granddaughter, Alicia Izararaz, and grandson Juan Candarpa, and great-granddaughter Eva Candarpa, of my office, and a host of other family members, and I join in remembering her life and all that it represented. I would also like to adjourn in memory of a friend and the husband of a dear friend. His name was Gordon Allen Smith. Gordon died at the age of 84 while on vacation on a boating accident at Lake Nahuel Huape in Baralocha, Argentina, and we join in mourning his loss with his wife and children. I know that Mr. Wesson is going to do an extensive adjourned motion for Assemblymember Bass, and I'll speak again after he has spoken.
Mr. Wesson? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Reyes, and then we'll come to Ms. Wesson.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank my colleague, Councilperson Perry, for bringing this to my attention. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Roger Hung. He passed away October 27th from complications of cancer. His friends describe him as someone who was easy to like and speak with, open-hearted, and always protective of the community. He loved most Chinatown. Some of his accomplishments include designing the Empress Pavilion Restaurant, collaboration with Anita Fay from Interior Design, and Blossom Plaza, proposed to be built on the little, old Little Joe's site. Its initial plans were drawn up by Roger Hung. Roger's a founding member of the Chinatown BID, a longtime member of the CCC, the CACA, and so many other worthwhile organizations serving the community. Roger, when I met him during the Mooncake Festival, he took me to one of the buildings there that he had worked on and what his family, I believe, owned or operated. We had tea, and he talked about the pride of the family associations, the, what used to be Chinatown in their minds, and what it was as a tourist attraction. Now, he wanted so bad to bring it back to its glory, and so, it is with, we will miss him, and we join his family in the mourning of his loss.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weiss?
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Dorothy River. She was a longtime resident for generations up in Beverly Glen, along with her husband, Les. The community center up in the Beverly Glen area is named after her husband, and she will be sorely missed up there.
Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Mr. Reyes's motion on Mr. Hung.
Sure. Mr. Hung, we'll add Ms. Perry to that. Mr. Wesson?
Yes, Mr. President and members, I was raised to believe that it was always the, or you would hope that it would be the responsibility of the sons and daughters to bury their parents, and it just seems indescribable to think when that scenario is reversed. So, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry and I rise today to adjourn in the memory of two young newlyweds, Michael and Amelia Wright. One of the reasons why it's so painful and yet special to us is that Amelia was the only daughter of Assemblymember Karen Bass, who was the person who took my place representing the 47th Assembly District. It was a very tragic accident that occurred this past Sunday, and about 4:20 or 4:22 AM, they were returning home and somehow, young Michael lost control of the vehicle and slammed into a guardrail and a pylon, and they were killed. A passerby tried to assist as the car was engulfed in flames, and this person, who I'd like to find out who it was, was injured trying to assist them. We elected, people think that, you know, we get good tickets to this event and that our job is always fun, and yes, we are public servants and we all enjoy what we do, but there are sacrifices that we all make, and probably the biggest sacrifice that we make is that we sacrifice our family and that we don't have the opportunity to spend as much time with them as we would like. Ms. Bass was in San Diego, engaged in a church run to help a woman candidate get elected to the California State Assembly when she was informed of the loss of her daughter and son-in-law. And us as elected officials, us who have made the same types of sacrifices that she has made, can relate to her. So, I think that it's important that we send this vibe, that we understand your sacrifices, and we are there with you. So, added to Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, and myself, we would also request that all members be included on this. And lastly, I will say, Ms. Perry said I should probably not show you this, but she, on the computer, showed me a picture of this couple, and they were just the most loving, beautiful young man and young woman that you could see. If you were a father of a daughter, I think you would love to have this young man as her husband, and if you were the father of a son, I think that you would love to have this young lady as a daughter-in-law. So, with that said, I request that we adjourn the entire council, and I know that Ms. Perry and Mr. Parks at least want to add something to this adjourn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Ms. Perry?
I just wanted to say to Karen that, you know, words can't express the sorrow over her loss, and that, you know, we just are thinking of her and praying for her, remembering her daughter. I remember meeting her when she was 15 years old, and I know Karen's a single parent and took her out a lot. I don't know whether she really enjoyed it, but Karen took her out and exposed her to a great deal, and she grew into a lovely young woman.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Parks?
Yeah, I think Herb hit it right on the head, is that none of us expect to bury our children, and they're such a special part of your life. Having been in that situation where you buried a granddaughter, it is even more unrealistic. But Karen has always been a special person, always very energetic. In fact, I think people really sense her commitment and her quality in the fact that she's barely been in the Assembly for a couple of years, and she's already in a major leadership position. And to be in that position where your colleagues think so highly of you, you just kind of think everything is going well in life, and then you won't even imagine what that phone call could have been, or someone showing up to the house saying, "You will never see your daughter again." But I think we all need to send our love to her and make sure that she understands that there's a lot of support, because that is a tragedy that even after the funeral, she will go through for the rest of her life, and that there will not be another birthday to celebrate, another Christmas. And those are the things many people do not realize that do not go through these tragedies. They just think it's, the funeral is the ending moment, and in fact, it's really just the beginning of that journey for that family.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Gruel?
Karen and I had a chance to have lunch a few months ago, and we spent half the time talking about our kids, and she was so proud of her daughter and the recent wedding, and when she thought about running a few years ago, she, and I also talked about what kind of impact that has on your family. And Karen, throughout her career, I think as Jen knows and Herb and I, I met her when she was at the Community Coalition, working many years ago, and she was everywhere all the time, and I think you were right, Herb, we, people take it for granted that whether you're an elected official or head of an organization that's trying to influence public policy or be a player, the toll on your family life, and as we all look at pictures on our desks of our kids or loved ones, it really hits home. And Karen's a very, very special person, and I know that all of us are sending our love to her and her entire extended family.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Zine?
I have two, Mr. President, both retired members of the Los Angeles Police Department. Officer Edward Ed Winston Elliott II, passed away October 22nd in Montana. Ed Elliott was born May 27th, 1947, in Glendale, married to his wife Helen for 36 wonderful years, drafted in the Army in the mid-'60s and served in Vietnam. Ed began his career with the Los Angeles Police Department in 1968, was a motor officer in the valley, and an active member of the Volunteer Mounted Horse Unit. Joined the mounted unit in the late '80s, he was one of three highly trained and experienced mounted officers on the horse detail. Many of the current mounted units' policy procedures and tactics are a direct result of Ed's input. Also a founding member of Metropolitan Division's E Platoon, and his contributions have led to the professional reputation he enjoys today. Ed had an outgoing personality, a great sense of humor. He'll be greatly missed by all his family and friends. His memorial service will be held tomorrow, 11:30, at Forest Lawn and Royal Park in Glendale. He's survived by his father, Edward Elliott Sr., his wife Helen, son Christopher, daughter Carrie, and five grandchildren. I had the pleasure of working with Ed. We worked motors together, young motorcycle officers, always calm, always professional. May he rest in peace, Ed Elliott. The second is another former partner, passed away, Thomas Tom Edward Sodden, oh, sorry, Thomas Tom Earl Sodden, passed away October 19th. Tom Sodden was born August 29th, 1943, in Lincoln, Nebraska, graduated from Polytech High School in Sun Valley, was in the United States Army from 1962 to 1965, also part of the Army Reserve through 1968. Began his career with the Police Department in 1969 as a police officer. First assignment was in Van Nuys area, last assignment was Valley Traffic Division, where he was a motor officer for over 15 years. Tom was known to his friends as the guy who lived life to its fullest. He'll be greatly missed by his family and friends. His memorial service will be held this Saturday, November 4th, 11:00 AM, San Fernando Mission Cemetery in Mission Hills. He's survived by his son Shane, sister Kathy, and brother Patrick. Tom Sodden, may he rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. We're sorry for your loss. We'll do all members on that. May all these souls rest in peace from today. Madam Clerk, please call the rule. This meeting is adjourned.